Welcome, welcome. Welcome, everyone. The time is 5:07 and this is the regular, this is a scheduled work session between the Leander City Council and the Home Builders Association of Boston. And we want to talk about garage standards and public improvement districts. So I appreciate everybody coming. And for those that are going to speak, we'll try to like call you up if we get to that time and just raise your hand. Appreciate you being here.
Mayor, do you have to confirm it?
Oh, sorry. Want to do a roll call?
Sure.
Present.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Sutcliffe.
Here.
Councilmember Seiger.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Hill.
All right. We do have a forum. We can do this. All right, David.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Absolutely.
So obviously, a couple of years ago, we did some garage door ordinances that I think were maybe might have had good intentions, but you know, maybe it's time to revisit some of those, just looking at some of the products that are coming out to the market. So I asked David if he could come tonight. He wanted to obviously talk to us again. We've talked about kids a little bit. We're going to talk about that in a little while. But if you could, just talk about what the market is looking for now, you know, compare that with some of our products that we have that are showing up in Leander and some of our ordinances.
Yeah, definitely. So we, I kind of broke it down. I spoke to my builders, kind of broke it down into three different sections in regards to alley load, alley loaded garages and the challenges that those face. And so cost, market, and safety. So I'll kind of walk through some of the feedback that I got from our members, starting with costs. Of course, everybody's talking about affordability. We're always trying to find ways to meet a certain price points. Oftentimes, as the cost of labor and materials continues to increase, builders are finding more innovative ways to reduce that price, including smaller lot sizes. So I think that, I don't think any one of those councils is surprised to see a lot of these small lot size products are coming forward. And throwing an alleyway in the back of those lots can really restrict both the attractiveness of the product as well as the overall cost. You know, it essentially is a road and everybody knows that roads are not cheap. Addition, additionally, the maintenance of those roads, if it falls to the private citizens, can oftentimes fall into disrepair. It's not always a guarantee that those roads will be well taken care of. And of course, if it falls onto the city, that's an expense for the city as well. You know, we ran some costs, ran some estimates of what it costs to build an alley. We've got anywhere from $7,500 to $10,000 for the actual construction, which equates to $15,000 roughly in retail.
Is that for a lot?
For a lot, yes ma'am. And again, topography can be a challenge as well, you know, trying to make the alley load lots work. And it's important to note that, you know, it's not just limited to one lot, it's limited to every lot, all right? It applies to every lot. But I think, you know, cost, of course, is important, but I think even more important to our builders is to talk about what the market wants. You know, it's, there hasn't been a lot of data out there to suggest that alleys are or are more valued by the consumer. I think it varies widely. One thing when we talk about homeownership that oftentimes isn't necessarily taken consideration, we like to think about the building and the actual home, but it's also important to take into consideration the land. Definitely owning a piece of land, I think, is a part of the American dream, homeownership. And you know, if you throw an alley, you drastically reduce the land that someone feels like they own. I think people enjoy their backyards. I know that there were some, I know that Councilor Sutcliffe and Stevenson were able to attend our housing forecast and saw, I think y'all heard from the speaker there, that people love their backyards and they love their space. You know, private backyards is very important. So, you know, we think that we have a lot of market research. Our builders have entire divisions who feel comfortable selling the product that is not alley loaded.
I had a question for you. So like I took some pictures, which I'll share with council later, and of some of the products that have come in, and there is absolutely no backyard at all, like you were talking about. So, you know, you talked about hitting a price point. And so, you know, I looked at some that we've had come in Leander lately, and they say 200s to 300s, right? But there's no backyard at all. So the question I have is, you're trying to hit a price point to attract what kind of buyer? Because if it's not, you know, people that have moved out of an apartment because they decided to have a child, or maybe they had a child, or, you know, they just want to kind of get out of the city, you know, this migration that's, you know, continues to recycle people coming out of the city to the suburbs to start their families, et cetera. Is that, are we seeing that price point be geared toward those buyers? Or is it a combination? Because it seems like if you, if you're telling me that you're trying to hit a price point, I want to know what buyer that is, and if it's not families. Is the empty nester market enough to sustain a whole subdivision geared towards that one buyer?
I'll say a little bit, and then I'll let Sean step in on that a little. I would say that in the Austin area in general, the $200,000 or less house product can't be built fast enough. There's a huge demand for it. But it just, it just becomes so difficult to achieve that price point, you know, we're willing to build it for whoever's willing to live in it, honestly. And it could be empty nesters, it could be the first time family, families moving out of the apartment. I would say it's kind of a catch-all.
Yeah, what you'll see in buyer profiles, you'll see young families buying their first house, coming out and, you know, they're having to spend 200, 220, $240,000 in today's world for that. You'll see young families with children, you know, would they like to go have something with a larger backyard? It's just not cost feasible based on the cost to develop and then the price of dirt, in particular in this market. You've got to, it's a give and take in everything. And what you try to provide to both those buyers is the most value for them. And to provide the most value is really to go with a narrower lot that's front loaded. It's going to have a backyard, is it the backyard that we all grew up with? But the reality of it is, is these young families and these young families with children, they don't want to be mowing a half acre lot. They don't want to be mowing a one acre lot like I grew up on here in Leander. They want to be, they want to be mowing as little as they can that their family can enjoy. And then you supplement that as a developer with community amenities for them to be able to go enjoy with playscapes and basketball courts and other types of things for the community to enjoy. The other, to your point though, you will see some move down buyers, some buyers that are now empty nesters that have that larger home and they realize, hey, I want something smaller, that's lower maintenance, that's newer. And so you'll see that buyer profile come in as well in these, in these 200 to 300,000 price point as well. So it's a combination of all of those, and it's, it's being able to develop a subdivision that sells to the meat of the market so that there is enough demand in the marketplace and we're able to supply product to meet that demand. As prices go up, the marketplace gets smaller for the potential buyers. When you look at qualifying incomes for $200,000 house, you know, perfect credit, you're talking about folks that are meeting your median household income, and so at 100%. And so you're not, it's not that 60 or 70 or 80% that we used to sell to a decade ago in first time entry level housing. It's really selling to your 90 and 100% of your median family or median household income here. So that, that's the difference. And if we ever have a real conversation about affordable housing, the gap's really in the 60 to 90% range. So that's a conversation for another night.
Why do you think the market here in Austin hasn't been geared towards or looking for the alley loaded product when it's such a popular product in other cities in Texas or throughout the country?
We didn't grow up with it, this market. It's a new product to the market. When you look at it from the consumer perspective, when you're, you're young families, young families with children, you know, your dream is to be able to have that playscape or that trampoline in your backyard and be able to enjoy that. The product, when it's put on the ground in central Texas, is cost prohibitive to that first time buyer. And so the markets, it's just not a traditional product for this market, so it's just not widely accepted.
Well, you probably didn't grow up with it, but we have a lot of people moving here from other places, obviously, so they probably did grow up with it.
I think that it also has to do with, again, the land aspect. I think, I think that smaller lots have been much more common in other parts of the country and other worlds relative to new here. I think that there are probably people who are tired of small lots since some of the other places moving here because they want the land. So I think that's, I think, I mean, Texas, everything's bigger in Texas, right? So I think that's a part of it.
Well, I have the-
Councilman, I'll also tell you, I just got back from visiting my mom in Allen. So right across the street, there's townhomes, they're front loaded. Well, Allen had a huge, you know, I don't know whether it was mandated or whatever, but a lot of the older houses, including one my sister lives in, are alley loaded. The newer houses are not. The newer neighborhoods are not. So, you know, when I've gone through Prosper and I've gone through Ponder in these areas, as Dallas Fort Worth has extended north, I'm not seeing alley loaded product anymore. I'm seeing front loaded.
And I-
Go ahead.
I was going to say, does that go to your third point of safety?
Well, I was going, before we got to safety, I was going to say that, you know, a lot of the smaller lots, front loaded, almost townhome or almost downtown home type products, they're still doing the front load, but you'll notice that they've, I guess stepped up their architectural features so that the home, it's not just a garage. It's a home and it's got its dormers and details that make it look.
That'd be my question to you. I know, okay, so we've established that we need bigger backyards, alleys are cost prohibitive, but the intent behind the ordinance was so that we don't have a driveway garage with a little door hanging off on the edge over here.
Right.
So I think if we go back to that conversation, I would be interested in seeing some creativity on suggestions to make that more aesthetically appealing. Pride of homeownership, you don't see a whole lot of people taking a picture of themselves in front of their garage door. You know what I mean? So let's make that a welcoming, maybe they're single doors and they're offset just a little so that you can have a little architectural detail, get something, you know, this, this is what you do. So bring us some of those ideas that we could implement and reconsider the reason for the ordinance in the first place.
And I think that we've begun those conversations, I think, you know, what we'd be interested in seeing is maybe some sit down meetings, with staff, kind of get an idea of what they're looking for. And just revisit the thrust of the ordinance to begin with, which is exactly what you just said. I think that we can come forward with some solutions.
And we're looking down the road also, down the road of maybe a decade or so, how are these homes going to hold their value if they're at least snout nose to garages?
Right.
And they're not.
Right.
I'm not sure how the council can be part of that conversation because we're the ones that are asking for things. Staff's job, you know, of course, to enforce those things.
Yeah. Responding to what we're asking.
Yeah, if we're asking for those things, then I don't want to put the buck on them. I want, I want the buck stopped here.
Absolutely. We'd love to have a, we'd love to have a prior conversation. We can put that together.
You know, what's interesting is that as we have these conversations about affordability, and I remember some of the conversations a couple of years ago when this was being debated was, you know, these houses in Leander that we're seeing, they're not going to hold their value. But if you look at statistics that Community Impact puts out, that's not, that's not true. Those houses are the ones that have gained the most value.
What, which houses are yours?
So I mean, like houses that maybe started at 180, now they're 240, they're 250, you know? So the market didn't, the mark, I think we reacted to a problem that wasn't there. You know, the market didn't say it didn't want those houses. In fact, those houses are still attractive and those houses are still selling for a lot higher than what they sold.
But also there's supply-
I don't think the discussion was on market.
I think the question is, if there's a alley loaded product with no yard and no render park, and it doesn't appeal to families, and it's already starting out at 250, is that house going to appraise? That's what we don't know. And that I'm more scared of than a traditional garage that people seem to want.
So as we go forward with crafting whatever the future of these ordinances look like, I want to be careful that we're not too detailed because I don't want to stifle changes in market or innovation. I still want to be open to those sorts of things. So I hope we can all take that into consideration.
And I think that's where I'd, I think to see where we're going forward is to look back and see the reason, the problem we were trying to address, you know, when we came back, and it was the snout nose houses. Do we happen to have any pictures? Do you guys like have any examples of what?
I've got some, but, or you got some, or some plans?
Because it was really obvious and, you know, I would, you know, being an agent, you know, taking people down to like, oh, can we not go down this one because all I'm seeing is garages? And it just didn't seem welcoming.
You don't have to count your houses to find them.
Right. You know, one of the other things that-
And then lighter tan garage doors.
Right.
That's embarrassing.
And I think we all knew that, especially your manager, that property values were going to increase and we weren't, that really wasn't the focus. It was more about, you know, making sure that we avoid streets that nothing but garage.
I was just trying to give the community a better look. And if y'all can, you know, come to the table with some ideas and stuff, like Ms. Shepherd said, you know, nobody's holding that, you know, look, I just closed down my house today.
Right.
It's like, where's the hidden front door?
But you know, there's some more attractive garages as well.
Right.
Like I know, the doors that swing out, I know they're more expensive, but are they more expensive than the alley? I don't think so.
No.
And they're, it would elevate the product.
I agree.
And I would tell you that that's a more desired feature is an upgraded garage door. And what the Myers research showed at the housing study is a diverse street scape is a very important buying decision. It's not the most important decision. The inside of the house is still the ultimate decision maker in how the floor plan lays out. But from the street appeal, what we know from the research is that when you're pulling up to your house, you want a diverse street scape and you don't want to be counting garage doors or painting it pink so that everybody knows where to go. Yes.
And I think, yeah. I think we also, I think we, I think we also need to realize that we're in a market that's incredible for sellers mainly, because there's, there's a lot of demand. And so a lot of these homes that maybe aren't as attractive, that are gaining in value and holding their value, that are affordable, are actually, I believe they're selling more per square foot than the, than the bigger homes and maybe even some, some nice homes because they are affordable, so there's a big demand on them. You know, and I would just like to point out, I was at a real estate agent's home and she was giving her daughter some instructions because she's training her daughter, her daughter's going to be a real estate agent too. And she was showing pictures of homes in Austin, and this couple could only afford $145,000, okay? Well, you should have seen what $145,000 was buying. And it was like a little shack, dumpy, I don't know how much money they were going to have to put into it to make it, it was, it was awful. And I thought, okay, that's 140, it's not anything to sneeze at, it's still quite a bit of money. But it was selling, no matter, even though it was, because it was affordable and they wanted to live in Austin. And so we have, we have that here. The problem's going to come is when the market kind of starts to settle down and that's where we're going to look at maybe those values not holding as well.
And we're, we're looking at a plateauing right now. You know, going back to the snout house concern, there are other parts of the composite zoning ordinance that, you know, allow for the lot size mixes, I think, that are in there too, that will, that will play a role in this as well that we need to take into consideration because having those mix, that mix in a neighborhood is another way that kind of mitigates the concern of the snout house.
Absolutely.
So this is, this is a house that is in Colt Springs and from what I have been told, you cannot build that house today.
Why?
That's not true.
Because the garage sticks out more than 10 feet from the front.
Doesn't look like it.
It's not from the, it's not from the front cover, it's from the front door. And it sticks out more than 10 feet from the front door, am I right?
Yeah.
So we measure from that front column to the door?
It's not the front column, though.
Yeah, it's the porch. Our ordinance allows from the porch, that's what we consider in your house.
So that is absolutely within our ordinance.
I don't know if that, that's five feet.
I'm sorry.
It was, if it's five feet, if that's five feet.
It's about five feet. Okay.
So if it's eight feet, then it wouldn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it is the front porch, not the door.
But yes, the front cover.
Yeah.
So.
Next.
I guess the question is, if it's not, then somebody needs to tell them because they took one of the most popular plans out of the market. So if they did, mystified us all.
Yeah. Crazy.
Anyway.
Mike, do you have any other pictures of houses?
Do you have what we were talking, referring to as the snout nose house? It's predominantly garage.
Well, that's what that was.
No, we, we're saying, no. Well, what the point is-
The front door's back here and the garage comes out? Or it's all flat?
I don't like that.
And we just look right down the street. There you go. See how you only see like garage, 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 garage? I thought that that was caused because we pushed the garage into the, pushed it back into the house floor plan.
And that's McCon Park, and it is actually a zero lot line, broad eye, in Bastrop.
But you get, you, you guys know what I'm talking about, right? But you have a narrow lot and you try to fit a standard footprint with a double garage, you end up with 20 feet of garage and five feet of door and nothing else.
Right.
That's, that's what we're talking about. Basically, you flip the alley loaded product to face the street.
Right. And then put the front door next to it.
Yes.
Do we have more pictures? Was there anything else?
So here's my question.
There we go.
If the buyer wants that, then let the buyer make that decision. It's not the city government of Leander's decision to make for you.
Well, a buyer I had, that was just my honest point. And that was just from somebody in the car with me going, all I see is garages and this is what they were seeing.
Well, there are neighborhoods that don't have that.
So what if you just tried to offer some diversification? Can you say about that?
But the difference is that, and I, I find it funny that we always pick neighborhoods that, you know, they're, the neighborhood just started and there's little sap and trees and then, you know, it's not the most desirable ones. And I've got some ones of houses in Leander where it's a three car front facing garage. And I'm telling you what, that it's going to appraise a heck of a lot more than any alley loaded product I've seen in Leander. So I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the, the question should be, A, are we getting the most from taxable opportunities for the kinds of housing coming in? B, is this what the market wants? Is this what the customers want? Don't we need to let buyers make these decisions? So that, you know, the biggest wealth accumulator for anyone is their house over their lifetime. So if we artificially inflate somebody's house 15 to 20,000 dollars, what's, what's that going to look like in five years when they want to move up to the next house? You know? Is there going to be $20,000 worth of equity instead of 50? You know, those are the things that I think we need to think about.
Okay, I have a question though. I have a question. Aside from affordability, okay, because we know that, that narrow lots are probably going to have to have a lot of garage out, out front, right? Because people also want garages. But, but aside from affordability, do, do you get that opinion that people want big garages out in front of their houses when they come up? I mean, is that a choice that they actually make? I want a garage and a door on the side, maybe a little porch or door on the side. Or would they rather have it more, look more like-
More balanced.
If you show them, all of the possible options for a floor plan, they're not going to go, that's my favorite.
I mean, because I'm talking about, you know, not looking at affordability. Because if somebody can't afford something that's nicer looking and that's, that's all the money they have, maybe they'll have to buy something like that, but.
I, I would say the priority is, first of all, is to have the home, right? So they're going to, they're going to buy whatever's in their budget.
Yeah.
The next important thing is, I think if you, if you threw up, if you asked them, you know, two, two bay garage looks, you know, it's really predominant, would you rather have one? They'd probably say, I'd rather deal with the two and have it be dominant.
To have the space, absolutely.
Right. So I think the space is, is a higher priority. So I, I think you're right. If all things equal, you know, if you really laid it out front, it's going to look better, they might choose the one that has less garage on the front facade. However, I think that's lower down on the decision tree for the, for the consumer.
What we're trying to do is find a way to marry the two.
Right.
Do you think it matters if they were, they shown a street like that versus a street that had a few more characteristics and the garage not as dominant? Do you think that the street appeal plays a factor?
There are, there are portions of your code that, that not only dictate how far front, far forward the garage can be, but also how much of the front facade can actually be taken up by the garage?
Yep.
So that would be difficult to achieve in the city. Plus, I think that you'll find that more subdivisions are, it's kind of interesting, they're, they're being less gritty and more-
That's a better garage door, to say.
That's valuable. Yeah, and that house is twice as much as the one we just looked at.
Yeah.
That still probably doesn't meet code, I think is the point, because more than 50% of the front is garage door.
And the driveways too.
However, because there is the offset and because there are some architectural features on the door and around the door, I don't think that's as, it's more palatable.
Get the shrubbery.
Yes, yes. Is that extremely expensive to do to make it look a little nicer?
Well, I think that's what y'all, I think that's the give and take in the conversation going on is that, you know, as, as an industry, we've got to come up with architecturally significant product that meets the desires of the community. And I think that all of this is a possibility with, with a code review, right, that's done correctly. And it's important to have industry stakeholders at the table. Having worked on the government's side of this, when we didn't have industry stakeholders at the table, we had a tendency to get it wrong the first time because we don't, we didn't have the experience necessary to what is and what isn't feasible. And is that possible? Yes. So we can, we can work with y'all and bring back some proposals of, hey, this is what we think was going to achieve the goal that y'all are, y'all are talking about today. We think it's probably a fairly reasonable goal that you're, you're looking at, at doing and, and working with us on it as an industry. The, the real question comes down to, does somebody, would somebody choose granite countertops or a snout nose house? And what the research says is they're probably going to pick the granite countertops inside the house over, over the street facade of it. And so it's a balancing act, knowing that the inside and the finishes on the inside are a larger decision maker than necessarily the outside. The difference between an alley load product and a street load product, how many people in an alley load product go out in their, their alley and hang out with their neighbors? Whereas on a street load product, you're going to be coming and going from your house and you're going to have a sense of community that goes along with it.
That is something that I hear over and over again.
I don't see that.
Is that the old don't know their neighbors.
And tying to that, you know, moving to the safety issue, one of the things that was said on the phone call is nothing good ever happens in an alley. And just ask your police chief. And so, you know, that, that creates a total different, whole different type of concern, I think, for the alley load.
And I had the opportunity to work in West Texas in a community that was predominantly alley loaded. And it was an older community and it was, you wouldn't see it at today's development standards, but it was a, it was a nightmare for the city with having to grade and clean alleys. They also have alley loaded trash receptacles and the alleys were constantly blown with trash. It wasn't the city's responsibility to pick it up, it was the neighbor's responsibility to keep the alley clean.
I think the, the reason that we ended up with alley loaded product wasn't that we wanted to push alley loaded product. It's that we wanted to avoid the dominance of the garage door. And when we're talking smaller lots, that was just the byproduct. So now that we've been down that road, I think we all have seen and experienced the outcome. And it's probably a good time to revisit this and have a conversation. So if we can do that, I'm not, I'm fine with that. I know that that's not allowed right now, but I'm fine with that. So if we can do some things that meet in the middle and achieve what we both really are aiming for, I'm all about that.
I did have another speaker I'm gonna let come up, Daniel. And, uh, what I ask him to do is...
Mayor, are we gonna have time to cover the pit, too?
Uh, can you make it? Just share how many, uh, how many plans you had versus how many we could do in Leander? Was that something?
Sure.
And who you are, who you're with, all that.
Uh, Daniel Loggins, I'm with D.R. Horton, uh, the product design guy. Uh, currently, I mean, I have three product lines I'm trying to do with affordable product center. Um, out of those plans, my, I have typically twelve to fifteen plans that we'll, we'll try to pull from any, any subdivision. In Leander, it usually takes me down about five plans is all I can use because of the garage requirements. So, um, what was I trying to say? The plans where the garage is dominant, I sell them all day long in Georgetown, I sell them all day long in Maynor. I just make the comment that nobody takes a picture in front of their yard, they do all day long. Those, those first-time buyers, they love that. And just...
They love the picture in front of the garage?
They just pop their brand-new home.
Right.
They give, they're in the American...
They, they view movies on that, on the big garage door.
Okay.
Um, but anyways, yes, there's a lot of plans that I would love to deal with. My top-selling plans, I cannot build in Leander current, just because of the garage requirements.
So if the garage owners is different, you, you would offer those products in with the...
Oh, sure, all day.
And you need a seat at that table when we have that discussion.
And I will say, that discussion previously, how we got to this point, we, we did work hand-in-hand with the HBA, and we had your input coming in, we worked with our engineers. So it was a very collaborative effort, so.
Absolutely.
Definitely wanna see that continue.
We absolutely give y'all credit for that, too. And, you know, we've, this is the first time we've talked about this, so we, we appreciate that, and, and the council's willing to, again, continue to tweak it.
This isn't our first revisit.
Yes, ma'am, I know.
And I wanna say, the picture that we saw a few minutes ago of the, the street where it's predominantly garages and, and tiny trees, it's not my cup of tea, but it looks a lot to me like Summerlin, which has been crazy successful and is full of people. So just because it's not something that we wanna live in doesn't mean that we should necessarily outlaw it. It's, it's somebody else's dream.
Well, I think affordability is probably the main issue there.
Well, when it was comparable to things that were selling in, within city limits, it was still going like in clusters.
And I think, I think that's the whole issue here, is how to make it affordable, and then, um, because back alleyways makes it more expensive, and that's, that's the issue here.
Okay. So, next is pits. So I know that that's been an ongoing conversation between us about, um, if you could put up, Mike, put one more up of the, uh, Crystal Springs. Which is a pit. And this kinda goes to my point, not only about the garages, but about, um, there's one that... That's the back alley. So obviously, not a lot of parking space there outside your garage.
Oh, okay.
But, I'm sorry, I do have a picture there in the front of the houses. But the point is that the houses, you know, is that it?
That's mine.
Yeah.
They're twelve hundred square foot, two-story houses.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have one in the front. But, um, anyway, the point is, you know, they're at a price point from two hundred to three hundred. So they hit that quote-unquote, you know, affordable mark, right? But once you do some, some add-ons and upgrades, you're probably at two fifty on average, I would guess. The point is, you know, then you've got a pit for two hundred and fifty dollars a month. So haven't you just given up all your affordability? So tell me why, as a skeptic of pits, unless there's something, you know, some million-dollar amenity center, or, um, you know, some bridge that you had to cross the Delaware, you know? Tell me why we should do, allow pit and put that on a homeowner.
I, I guess first off, what's, in y'all's opinion, what are the requirements that advocate? So what requirements, they think?
What would, what would trigger winning a pit?
Right.
You know, i- it, it all comes down to infrastructure, it all comes down to the, the getting the financing in time to get the houses done, uh, in a reasonable amount of time. Because every, every day goes by, it's a carry cost to the builder. Um, I, I think that you re, you end up with, uh, more opportunity to get financing to build the kind of infrastructure that the, uh, community would demand. So, you know, without a pit, you might not ever have the opportunity to have an amenity center at all. Your roads might not necessarily be of the quality that you desire, um, and it wouldn't be done, it would be under construction for longer, if that makes sense. So I think, I think it's, it comes down to the, the, the customer, the customer continues, excuse me, continues to want more product, uh, and in order to meet that need, that's why pits are a tool that builders use in order to get to that point quicker. Uh, and, uh, you know, I know that the affordability issue is a challenge, but, uh, you know, the, I know that those last two pits that came down on Leander, they had enhanced notification requirements, and were a lot more upfront about it. Uh, I know the first one, there were some concerns, uh, last time we talked about this.
So I, I have a question. We do have a lot of ordinances and requirements in the development process than other cities have, which is only increasing your costs. I mean, I know of one development with like two hundred and twenty homes, they're spending more than six hundred thousand dollars on street trees. And then every frog pond that needs masonry is, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand. The wider sidewalks, four dollars a square. I mean, all of that translates to the cost to develop. So how much of those expenses are maybe triggering more pits that we're seeing now?
That's an interesting, uh, interesting thought. I would like to, I mean, all of it ultimately falls down to the price of the home. So if there were regulations that might, I, I'm not sure if there's a trigger there, but that would be something that we should research.
That's what I'm hearing, is just so...
So if, if pit is, is for infrastructure, the street trees obviously aren't infrastructure, but the, the retaining ponds, detention ponds maybe?
Can you, can you spend money from a pit on a sidewalk?
Sidewalks, landscaping, all that.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
So it does, so the trees, the street trees do fall in that?
Yeah.
Because it's...
General purpose.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it's for the amenities, too, so this one's a little HOA.
So I adore you, we always get along, but all of those things, infrastructure and amenity centers, those have been done traditionally without pits. Um, I understand that the price of building everything has gone up, but so has the price that we're selling it for. Um, I don't feel like that's argument enough to get me to raise my hand to approve a pit, because ultimately, you know, the consumers that buy those, they're not getting an annual notice of this, I mean, let's, we could call it a tax, because that's how it's taken. Um, they're not getting it from the builder, they're getting it from us, and they come in and they're upset with us. And, and I think rightfully so, because it does come across as fairly deceptive.
I agree, I think, I think the state legislature...
Can we make it clear first that it's, it's not really us, we're just administering the, the, the fee to them? It isn't really us.
We are taxed when they're in here.
We're not taxing them, it's the pit itself.
Say that when they're in here angry, holding the notice.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
I think the state legislature allowed this as a financing mechanism for, for developers, and y'all are using it, but creating digital tax for the homeowner, and we're stuck in the middle.
But the disconnect is, the developer asks for the pit, the builder is responsible for conveying and selling the pit to a consumer. So for us, I mean, I know you're not gonna highlight the most undesirable feature of a community, which in many cases is the increased cost of the pit. So we talked about this at retreat and came up with some ideas, so I'm gonna put them out there and let you guys respond to that, or absorb them. We talked about, um, requiring signage at the entrance to the development that not only says you are entering a pit, a public improvement district, but says clearly, there is additional cost here, this is an additional tax, some kind of verbage that makes that clear. And includes a link to either a website or a phone number to call and get more information on exactly what that means. Because the message that we receive from citizens is, we didn't know anything about this until we got it built. So that's the job that we have been facing, is how to make sure that doesn't happen. So our collaborative thoughts were, if we're gonna make sure that people know, we're gonna require that the signage is there at, at the street, at the front of the model, inside the paperwork they get, so that disclosure, disclosure, disclosure is clear.
One of the other things that we said is, you know, you walk in, you get the brochure with the houses and all the prices. And it doesn't include that eleven thousand or fourteen thousand. So it's really not two hundred and sixty thousand, it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand, if you're going to work it. I mean, so that's truthfully how much that house.
You're gonna pay for the lot, the plan price, the lot price.
That makes sense.
And the pit.
So we thought anytime on any type of documentation where an actual plan cost was mentioned, it would have an asterisk that would take you down to say, this is, you know, a public pit.
Yeah, I went through the workshop material this afternoon that y'all reviewed, and I think there's a lot of very reasonable things in there that can be implemented on, on the notification side. And, and KB Home currently is not building in any sub, actively in any subdivisions that we were the builder or developer of that has a pit. Uh, we're in one subdivision that we're closing out that had a pre-existing pit that we were in. Uh, but I think the notification side of that is, I think there's some very reasonable, uh, uh, proposals within that workshop.
Yeah, I agree.
We had a good afternoon.
And maybe, uh, my question is, does Taylor Morrison participate in developments with pits?
We are going to break ground at the end of the year in one in City of Austin.
Okay.
City of Austin, PJ, but...
Is that common now?
No.
Okay.
Well, the reason is because Taylor Morrison is a developer and a builder, and they don't have to pass that buck.
Well, but so is DR and KB.
How about your company?
It's the same thing.
Pulte, yeah.
Two pits right now?
Two pits, okay.
And who are you with?
D.R.
Thank you.
What would happen theoretically, I'm not saying we should do this, but if we as a city decide we're no longer gonna be involved in any pits whatsoever, no more future development in any pits, what do you think that would do to the market?
I think you would see a reduction in the quality of the subdivisions a lot of times. Uh, I think you would see construction projects drawn out and construction noise, everything else that comes with that kind of headache. Uh, I think it would just move slower.
Yeah, okay.
Slower is not bad.
Well, it is for the developer.
It is for the developer, uh, it's a challenge to, to, to delays, the carry cost, the financing.
Yeah, especially if the cost of dirt and, and this market, as well as the cost to put infrastructure in. The, the one thing that, that, that builders need is velocity. And so if it affects velocity to the level that you're not able to sustain a development, it, it, it would slow the market, because you'd start seeing reduced development in market. You've got supply-demand equilibrium that you're currently meeting, and you'd see that shift dramatically. Uh, and, and you'd probably see, uh, uh, price inflation pretty darn quick.
So you're gonna offset the cost of the pit with an inflated house price, because of carrying costs?
I mean, that's basically what Cedar Park did, forgive me if I'm incorrect, but they, they pretty much said, "We're not gonna do bids in, in their city." And that was probably about five, ten years ago, I know their close could build out.
Right, and that's, I think that's the difference there.
Right.
Okay.
But just as there's market demand on houses, there's going to be market demand for the various ways to finance the builder end. And I think if we were to, and, and other councils were to stop approving pits, you all would find another way to get that financing mechanism. It's not like everything slows to a halt, right?
Well, that's a good question for them. Where do you see, you can get the other kind of, the financing to do this if you can't get it through a pit?
You know...
I mean, how hard is that gonna be?
There are, there are a handful of tools available. I would say, without a doubt, that all those tools are getting a hard look at from the legislature this session. Um, there's been a lot of noise about special purpose districts, so I don't think that more tools are gonna become readily available anytime soon. In fact, I think that we're likely staring down the barrel of more restrictions.
We know what's interesting about the legislature, is, you know, the hot topic right now is tax reform, is property tax reform. And this is literally a pile-on to property tax. So I'm thinking if the legislation is looking at that hard, this would not be a feather in anyone's cap to be pushing a pit, right?
I think that's an important consideration, um, certainly one that, that y'all would need to, y'all would need to, you know, determine.
And kinda the reason I'm going there is because, just like we did with the garages, we had a purpose and a reason to try to get to the ordinance that we came up with. There was a, a consequence, some good, some not, so we're revisiting it again. So if we're gonna talk about pits, let's not have to go halfway. Let's look at the far, uh, far down the road and see if we can't fix the problem before it becomes a bigger one.
Yeah, because from, from this whole conversation is, you're telling us you really need these pits to make a good quality neighborhood and, and product and subdivision. And we're saying, we just don't want these future citizens that are buying these homes to come in feeling like they got shafted.
Right.
I would rather you add it on to the price of the house.
That's what I think, is just clarification.
Just full transparency.
You can call it what you want, but have it out.
Can you go through, it says the price is two hundred thousand, magic, two hundred thousand and...
That's why I say, anytime a price is mentioned, it should say, "By the way, you got another eleven thousand based on this cost."
Because it does get advertised out thirty years, just like a regular...
Right, so it's what they can qualify for.
Yeah.
They put money down on a two sixty house.
Right.
And then later they find out, oh, you know, oh my gosh, I need to qualify for another fourteen thousand.
I think that our members are open to any sort of notification, notification requirements y'all might bring forward. I think that that would be the, the, I think that would be a smart step forward and kinda see how that goes. And obviously, this is going to be an evolving discussion, uh, but I, I would love to see those recommendations.
I think when somebody's qualifying for a house, there's a homeowner association, those dues are calculated into their qualifying numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
Same with a pit, so why, let's just put it in the number. You guys open to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's great.
That's a good answer.
That's the only, that's the only issue I have.
Transparency, yes. I mean, we wanna give y'all all the tools.
Right.
Right.
Competitive, so...
And that's our biggest concern, you know, we wanna make sure that the tool stays available, and that, again, both the concerns of the council in that...
We don't wanna take anything away from you or a consumer, we wanna make sure that everybody just knows what they're getting.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, are there any more questions? Because we can close out a little early. Um, any more comments, questions? Okay, good.
Welcome, welcome, everyone. Good eve, good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, February seventh, the time is six oh eight PM. This is a regular city council meeting. Uh, I'd like to invite Dr. Andrew Fox with Celebration Church to come forward. He's gonna be providing our invocation. Dr. Fox is with Celebration and heads up the SEU uni, uh, university within Celebration. And Dr. Fox is also the chaplain for the Austin Fire Department, so we appreciate you, sir. If you will remain standing for the pledges afterwards. Thank you.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for each other. We thank you for a mind to think and a heart to feel. We thank you for wisdom that you put in our minds and into our hearts. We thank you that we are not orphaned, we are not left alone. And so we give you thanks for this gathering, for every mind and for every heart, and we ask you for your grace, for your favor, for your wisdom, for your hand upon our lives. We ask these things not for our glory, but for the glory of your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
The Boy Scouts are gonna come forward and lead our pledges. Let me just stand right over there, boys.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you guys coming out. These guys are transitioning to Boy Scouts this weekend, so congratulations, guys. All right, uh, Ms. Crabtree, if you could do a roll call?
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepard.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Seiler.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Torrey Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum, we can do business. Uh, we're gonna go to number six, is citizen comments. I do have someone signed up to speak. Kenneth Shaw. Oops, Ken just stepped outside. Yes, he's the only one. Okay. 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 All right. Okay, so we're gonna go to number seven, recommend, recognitions, proclamations, and visitors. Um, Eric Zeno, if you'd come forward, and our ma- Mayor Pro Tem is gonna read a proclamation.
Hi, Eric. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
And, and you're gonna be in the same boat as him in my house. He's, he's, you both are...
You may need to explain that one.
I'm gonna, I'm sad to see you. Congratulations, though, on your new job. Okay. Um, um, proclamation, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas African Americans have been an integral part of America for generations, and our nation is stronger because of their contributions. And whereas with grace and determination, African American men and women have shaped our nation and influenced American life, Frederick Douglass, W E B DuBois, Rosa Parks, and Martin Luther King Jr. advanced the cause of civil rights for all Americans and helped change the course of American history. Educators Booker T. Washington and Carter G. Woodson helped break down racial barriers in education to provide opportunity for all people. Americans have benefited from the achievements of scientists like George Washington Carver. Artists such as Pearl Bailey, Ella Fitzgerald, and Louis Armstrong inspired Americans and created some of the most celebrated music this nation has ever produced. And whereas the foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of this struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. It not only offers black Americans an occasion to explore their heritage, but it also offers all Americans an occasion, an opportunity, to gain a fuller perspective of the contributions of black Americans to our nation. And whereas the American experience and character can never be fully grasped until the knowledge of black history assumes its rightful place in our schools and our scholarship. And whereas while the observance of Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals, this year's national theme, Black Migrations, emphasizes the movement of people of African descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities. Now therefore, I, Mayor Troy Hill, and the Leander City Council do hereby proclaim February two thousand nineteen as Black History Month. In Leander, Texas, in Leander, Texas, and urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Do you want to do a photo? Yeah, let's go do a photo. I think you last chance last one. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Um, this year's will be the sixth annual Black History Month celebration for the city of Leander. Uh, we have a good program. Of course, dinner is at six, um, six thirty. We will have, our event speaker is Gigi Edward Brans, the board, ACC Board trustee chair. We will be honorary, will be Dr. Lori Ellis, who is the dean of business and also the dean of business of the St. Gabriel Campus here in Leander. Uh, we have performances by Center Stage Studio and by sorority group that's gonna be there. So we look forward to everyone coming out and, um, supporting that event on February the fifteenth.
It's a fabulous event.
I'm sorry, February fifteenth, six, dinner and six, program at six thirty, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. It's been such a pleasure watching little Miss Zeno there grow up, remember when she was born.
Eric, thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do. All right, we're gonna move to eight, staff reports.
Yes, sir, mayor. I'll, I will be brief with my report, and then Mark Willis will come up with the economic development report. So we've got the, the single family permit. So once again, it's, it's a, it's a busy graph. So this time, we're gonna look all the way to the left, and we've got five years of data for January. So, and, and then under January, the far right bar there, we issued one hundred permits, um, in the city of Leander in J- uh, in January. I said in the city of Leander. Eleven of them were in the ETJ, and we're keeping up with that. But even if you take those out, we still had eighty-nine over the January last year at sixty-two. So, um, I'll say the same thing about this, about sales tax. Never get too up or down about one month. It looks like we are started off, um, with a bang for two thousand and nineteen. Uh, but, uh, after we get a, a quarter under our belt, we'll really have a, have a good feel for it. But we don't see any, any sign of anything slowing down at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mark? Any questions? All right, Mr. Willis?
Good evening, mayor and council. Perhaps the most important thing that's happening, and those of you, I think most of you know, but, uh, Mr. Zeno has taken a job with, uh, Lago Vista. They're starting their own economic development program, and he's going to build it from the ground up. And I have every bit of confidence that I will regret, uh, regret that and the competition to come. But they're getting a good man, and we're losing one. But, uh...
Agreed.
More power to him. He'll do great. So, what I thought I'd do, yeah, absolutely.
You know, Eric, once you get past that nuclear waste dump that they're building out there, I think you'll be, you're gonna do great.
Again, uh, explained to you last time, we have come to the conclusion that we get most of our leads through face-to-face meetings and going to, uh, conferences and what have you. So I thought I'd give you an idea of what our spring schedule looks like. And this is part of it, starting in March and then running through June. Uh, I'll kinda go through those, um, that you're interested in. Uh, Flowing Economic Development Council is all the southern, uh, I think fourteen southern states. Eric's been a member of that. I don't know how I'm, you know, I might switch that out.
We're gonna sneak you in.
I was gonna have him go to that one, but, uh, Industrial Asset Management Council is one of the largest groups, uh, going. One-third are corporate real estate managers, one-third are, uh, site consultants, and only one-third are economic developers. The waiting time for economic developer to become a member of this is three years now. So that, that's one of our more important ones. The others are, are things we go to. We've identified, they have our targets in there. Um, and then, again, there's more. That's the spring. We're gonna go, uh, all over the place. And now that I'm gonna be doing it by myself, I'm glad my kids are out of the house. And, and I wanted to go through a little bit of some of the things we provide for people who are coming looking. This is, you can't really read the numbers. But, uh, those are traffic counts for the city. Uh, particularly when retailers come in, they can ask us for that. We can do, uh, some of the stuff the realtors do as far as, uh, compare prices on pieces of property comps and that kind of stuff. But this is the one that's primarily asked for by the retailers coming in. And, uh, we, uh, we buy this from CoStar, and, uh, it's proven to be very useful to us.
Excuse me, Mr. Willis. What are the dates on the traffic counts?
Huh?
Uh, what is the date on the traffic?
They're usually about a year late. You know, and that's about as close as they get.
Better than we've had in the past. That's great.
And I wanted to go over a little bit of the advertising we've, we've done in the past. Site Selection Magazine is one of the three, there's three major site selection magazines in the United States. Site Selection Magazine is, is the biggest and most powerful of them. We have advertised in them, generally speaking. Uh, we only advertise in there when Texas is being featured. Other than that, it's, it's not worth our expenses. The guy on the skis, this is the older one, I believe that's Rick Perry on the skis there. Uh, but again, we're, we're moving away from that and going to where, this is one of the others, they do a resource guide, and we've, I've come to the conclusion that if we're in the resource guide and they're looking at Texas, they'll find us. And it's much less expensive, and we're on their website for twelve months using this. And again, this is the other one, Business Facilities. Those are the three major ones. Um, and again, they all have some of these conferences, they all, um, sponsor some of these conferences we go to. So we might wanna make sure we're in their publications and on their websites so they can find us. But again, what really, uh, works for us is the face-to-face, and then they look, look us up. Uh, this past year, we, this is, this is web advertising. We hired a social media company to help us, uh, get out there. And our experience with them is, uh, we're not gonna renew the contract. We got more hits on the website, but it wasn't who, they were too broad in, in what they went for. And just counting hits on our website is not, not what we're aiming at. And this gives you an idea, what they reported is unique visits. And again, that's, that doesn't tell me much. When I look at, this is the data we get from, uh, our webmasters, and this is more important to me. And what I use this for is I look, and we go to one of those conferences, I come back and I pull this up two weeks later, and I wanna see a spike in the hits. I want the people that I talk to, and I usually go to these conferences with at least six to a dozen people I've identified that are attending that are my targets. So I wanna see a spike every time we go to one of these. And that's how we decide whether we do it again or we look for something else to go to. The other good thing about the conferences is in almost every case, we're able to partner with the Will, uh, the Willco Group, or Opportunity Austin, or Team Texas, and we get a whole lot more bang for our buck. For instance, at I A M C, we go, but Team Texas sponsors a dinner for thirty selected, uh, real estate people and site selectors that we pick out. That, that's, uh, tens of thousands of dollars, about twenty thousand dollars to put that on in the kind of restaurants. They take, costs us four hundred dollars to be, participate in that. So we get, we try and, uh, use...
Mark, can I ask you a question about that? So do they split the booth with us, or is that, do we split the cost?
Well, at I A M C, there are no booths. They don't allow booths there.
Okay.
But, um, like ICSC, that was a Williamson County booth. And, but what we found out going there is if we're manning the booth, I assure you, Leander gets a better representation than the cities that aren't there. So, uh, we have found several of the developers that are looking around town. At this time, we met at ICSC two years ago. Takes that long to get them in and convince them to come. But, uh, I, I can assure you, we did not, I did not push Georgetown to those guys. You need to come look at us. We're, we're where it's happening. So, uh, that's the reason to go, is get the bigger bang for the buck with them, but be there. And, you know, even some of their stuff managed to go under the table sometimes when they're not around. Uh, I'm, I'm being facetious, but, uh, but, um, again, it, we are the Austin brand. That's why we go with Austin. Williamson County, the Williamson County group, we concentrate mainly on stuff that's happening in the state, cause Williamson County is known in the state. We see Opportunity Austin as more of a national, uh, venue, going with them to cities like Chicago and Los Angeles, and we have targeted, uh, meetings there that we go to. And then Team Texas is also national, but we're, they're also international, which we can't do. And we feed off that with them. Uh, the other thing that we do is I'll stay a day or so afterwards and set up additional meetings, specific meetings with people I know and I wanna talk to on some of these trips to, particularly to LA and Chicago where there's a lot of site collection consultants. And the idea is just to keep, keep them, uh, aware that we're here, and if they're gonna look in the Austin area, at least give us a look. And really, that's all we ask for, is let us put in a proposal as well. Don't just think Austin's the only thing here. And all of us in Williamson County fight that battle daily. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So, Mark, you know, we talk a lot about attracting businesses here, and we talked about maybe specific targeting of what businesses that we want here, right? So I was in Dallas. I've stopped in at a place that I'd been in before. The owner happened to be there at lunchtime. Uh, it's called, uh, The Dog House Beer Garden, but it's a restaurant. And, um, they have a guy that's gonna start a chain down here. And I got the guy's name, and, um, you know, who knows where it'll go. But I guess the, my question is, are, is that what it takes? Or how are they, you know, how are people reaching them? You know what I mean?
Well, um, ICSC, if they're there, we reach them there. I look for, um, again, wherever I go, I go through the, the attendees are usually, I get them a week before. And I will target the ones I think fit us, whether that's, uh, core businesses that create primary jobs, or that's another kind of business. If it's ICSC, we look at, uh, specific. Right now, it has to be basically standalone type retailers, because we, our developers are just getting to the point in town where they're gonna have the critical mass where they can, uh, feed, different retailers can feed off of each other. Like Eighteen Ninety Ranch, that kind of thing. We're just starting to get the developers in. And in fact, the first two years I was here at ICSC, I did not talk to particular retailers. I was after developers, trying to get them to come down here and look at property in Leander, take on a hundred acres or something like that. And, in fact, a hundred acres would be ideal. Uh, so now we've got those, now from here on out, as they get ready and get their infrastructure in place, we'll be more targeting individual retailers that we go through. And of course, I, uh, I hammer on the guy from Whataburger every time I see him. And I see him about six times a year, various things. Uh, that's the one I know everybody wants. And, but we, we basically try and tell everybody, we, we throw a wide net, and then in some cases, they come in and they're disappointed because we can't help them. But, uh, uh, we, we work with anybody who comes in, but we target specifics that we go after.
Do we work with shopping centers like Gateway where Chick-fil-A is going? And, you know, Randall's Center, I know New Quest owns a property across the street from them.
Right. With, with the develop, now those both predate me.
Okay.
But when you work...
But they still have holes in them today that need to be filled.
Right. And we're still working with Gateway to try and help them fill in one of those holes in particular. They have some unique challenges in what, uh, agreements they've signed with their existing tenants that give them a real tough time. That's why it took so long for Chick-fil-A to get in there. They had to get all the parkings, uh, and traffic flow where everybody was happy. Uh, so there's some challenges there. Randall's is, is just close to filling up, and it's Cold Springs, it's got about four or five left. Um, I expect those to fill up in the next year. In particular, I think the biggest thing coming for us is we know we're over sixty thousand now, but the last census estimate, that was last July, had us under fifty thousand. But fifty thousand is a magic number for retailers. So July, when it comes out, and that, and we're sixty thousand, they will probably predict us to be fif- or, uh, estimate us to be about fifty-five thousand. They're always behind. But that will, should trigger a lot more interest. And again, our challenge is to get more of those centers and more of those developers out. And what you do with developers is you don't, you don't incentivize individual retailers, but you incentivize the developers by maybe rebating them part of the sales tax that's generated out of their project, or even, uh, property tax reduction, that kind of thing, with the idea that maybe they will pass that on. And you can actually build that into the deal if they pass that on to their tenants. So we will definitely be looking at, at that type of thing as we get more of these in.
Could we do something, um, similar to what Taylor's done as far as, you know, if a landlord was to, um, you know, not raise people's rents the first year or the first two years, then they get rebated a certain amount based on giving people a chance to move on?
I've seen that done. Uh, it can get really messy and really, really expensive pretty quick. I haven't done it myself, and I, I generally would rather, you know, put it into an agreement with them that, you know, you're gonna, uh, you can't say each ind- which individual business they give a break to, but you can say we, you know, we expect you to, expect this to be passed on. It depends on how you write up the contract.
I think one of the most frustrating things that I see is when you look at a Randall Center, or you look at an H V Center, and they turn it over to their, to a real estate arm, they're just interested in filling a hole. That's for hair salons or nail salons, so be it. It seems like we should be able to... It seems like we should be able to incent the center to try to give a variety, which by the way, would help the anchor tenant, whether it's HEB or Randall's.
I don't disagree, but I'm not sure I know a way to really do that at this point. The interesting thing is, I'll say this about the Randall Center and the shopping center across the street from it. We've had a couple of different groups coming in here that are interested, would be interested in buying that, that whole center. So it's a pretty coveted location. But picking the tenants, basically, I don't know how you keep them, if somebody's willing to pay them out there asking for a square foot. I've never found a way to tell them, hold up and wait six months till we get the right one for you. That's just hard to do.
And then one of them goes under and then you've got a hole for another six months. So.
Retail's a tricky thing to recruit and almost impossible to incentivize. The other problem you run into with it, if there's anybody that competes with the retailer you incentivize that's already in town, they have every right to tell you, you're giving them a competitive advantage and they're absolutely right and they should hammer us on it.
Absolutely.
I've seen that happen.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Good conversation. Okay, we're going to move to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion approved by Counselor Cannon with a second by Counselor Shepherd. All in a favor? Passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move to 18. Direct staff and coordinating, oh, sorry, round one. 20. Conduct the first public hearing on the City of Leander's juvenile curfew ordinance, Article 8.02, Division 2 of the Leander Code of Ordinances, to determine the need to continue the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as per Texas local code, government code, the city is required, before the 30th anniversary of the date of the adoption of a juvenile curfew ordinance, is to conduct public hearings on the need to continue, modify, or abolish the ordinance. Our current ordinance is set to expire in March of 2019, which we originally readopted it in 2016. With a steady increase in the city's population, there is a corresponding increase in the youth population and a statistically higher probability that there will be higher numbers of minors wandering our streets at night. Continuing this curfew ordinance would provide a tool for law enforcement to make lawful contacts with minors who are found to be out during late night hours and address related issues in an effort to reduce youth-related crime and victimization. We recognize that minors are not the only cause of late night crime and community problems, but we feel this is a tool that will allow us to make good faith contact with unsupervised minors to determine if they are legitimately out late because they fall within the ordinance's expectations. Likewise, it would also allow us to make good faith contact with those minors that are not out with the knowledge of their parents in committing mischief, engaging in criminal activity, or causing other juvenile-related community problems. We're seeking your guidance for this, from our council, on the desire to continue, modify, or abolish this ordinance. And if you do decide to approve it, which is no action tonight, which would be at the next meeting on the 21st, we would not need to readdress it until the 2022. It sounds kind of crazy to say that. So just a little history, we've had this since 1998. We've had this ordinance in place. Every three years, we've come up before council and presented it to you. Like I said, we did it back in 2016 was the last time. It's hard to believe, it's already been three years. And your packet have also included a comparison to the cities that are around us that are comparable to our size, if you will. It did include Williamson County, just so you could have an equal comparison of who has them and who doesn't, who has daytime curfews, which we do not. Some cities, communities do have those daytime curfews. And if you can see, the council's then at that time fluctuated hours. So that's again, up to you if you want to fluctuate the hours, they're all kind of all over the place. And then also included, which we thought would kind of be helpful, and we did it last three years ago, was what we call a frequently asked questions. Because sometimes when you look at an ordinance, it's a lot of legalese. So we want to break it down so people could really understand what it really, the times that it really, what we're looking at and who it applies to and basically all the exemptions. So you can go down there and look at all the exemptions. So this isn't typically something that, you know, it's overly used. Like I said, it's just a tool. Some of the stats and Sergeant Wilcox would be here next week with a lot more detailed stats, but the ones that I did bring just for this evening, just to kind of show you how often this is used. Over the last three years, there was only 55 citations actually written for the curfew violation. We had 139 of that total, actual children that were out past that time. I believe our youngest was 11 and usually it's between the hours of about 2:30 and 4:00 in the morning. And most of those times that when the citation was written, there was some other activity going on. So it wasn't just the fact they were out for curfew. There was drug-related issues, alcohol, just a couple of other things like that, which you can bring some more stats. So other than that, I know this is a public hearing for anybody that has anything else they want to say. Of course, I'm here for questions and if there's some questions that we can't answer this evening, I know we'll have until the next week, we can get with anybody if they need specifics so we can dig into the numbers. There's just not a whole lot of numbers there, so.
I do have a question.
Excuse me. Public hearing.
Yeah, that's right.
The public hearing is still open. Nobody's signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Last chance. All right, now we're going to close the public hearing and this is no action, but we can have discussion.
Okay, I have a simple question. Williamson County is stricter than we are, so that means outside our city limits if a juvenile is caught outside because ours allows to 1 a.m. and theirs only till 12 a.m.
Right. So we would only deal with those directly within our city limits. So anybody in the county, yeah, they might as well come to Leander.
So the county is not going to come in here and harass anyone?
No, they won't come in here and do that at all. No, ma'am.
Chief Mitten?
Yes.
How is this information communicated to the teens and the parents?
So typically, we try, we usually put this online, especially, I know last time we had this, we put it on online for some time. I know sometimes this is one of those things that it just gets word of mouth. A lot of, so we do, we do put the frequently asked questions, we'll go on online as well on our page so we have people who can reference it. But other than here and Facebook and social media, I don't know if it's shared at the schools. I know SROs tell kids about it and talk about it, but that's probably the main ways that we get that information out. And we can post it on the city's website and we can do, we can do that this year differently.
I would love to see us partner with LISD to get the information out. I took a little personal poll with about 20 teens and nobody knew about it. And honestly, two teens and raised here and I didn't know about it.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, we talk about it and then three years later, we talk about it again. And like I said, it is hardly ever, as you see that what we use it, a lot of, most kids are in past those hours. But yeah, I totally understand it. We can definitely do that.
And so Chief, if there was someone that their job was at a restaurant and they're 1 o'clock, right? So if they were to go to a McDonald's, if they explained that they were working or still in their uniform, they probably wouldn't have a problem.
I would say probably not at all because it's, you know, the citations that were written, at least over the last three years and especially last year, none of the, there wasn't one child in that situation. It was all in the dark in a park somewhere, you know. And so no, and even before an officer can write a citation and it's written in there, they need to talk to them and find out kind of what's going on and get the story before they just, you know, and I don't want any officer to ever look and go, well, it's 12:02, so sorry, you know, kind of thing. We're not, you know, we're not here to do that. And but yes, if there's anybody that's stopping, you know, because we, when this ordinance first came out in 1998, we didn't have the, anywhere in town really to do any of these kind of things. So now we've got 24-hour places, kids may, parents may send them up there to get something at the store. I mean, you know, I've sent my daughter up to CVS at 2:00 in the morning to get something for her brother, you know, because he needed it for school the next day, right? We've all been through that. But any of those situations, if they just explain it, you know, we're not writing citations for things like that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
All right, we'll see you on the 21st.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, so we're going to move to number 21. Conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding ordinance case 19-OR-001 to amend the subdivision ordinance, to amend the riparian corridor provisions, and to provide for related matters, Leander, Williamson, and Travis Counties, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a public hearing for changes to the subdivision ordinance regarding the riparian corridor setbacks. The City Council and Planning Commission held a joint workshop on January 3rd to talk about amendments to this ordinance. After the meeting, an amendment to the ordinance was initiated to update the standards to allow for averaging of the setback area and then to add, allow for the additional options from LCRA that are missing from the original ordinance. The schedule is set for review by the commission on January 24th and council February 7th. Then on January 17th, the council received a presentation from an engineer regarding some additional modifications. Based on this discussion, staff presented the modified ordinance to the commission for review and then we also had some recommendations. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request and they motioned to approve it with some amendments. They agreed with including the engineer's suggestion with the establishment of the floodplain plus the 25 feet. They wanted to include the original ordinance as an option and then they also wanted to add buffering or averaging options for the buffers. So where you added more riparian corridor, you could take away in another area. They also wanted to allow for the current standards that allowed streets and stormwater detention structures and utilities across corridors and allow for wastewater interceptors and trails to be placed within the corridors. They also wanted to allow building in the setback area that was in the second option that came from the engineer, as long as the finished floor of the building is two feet above the base floor elevation. And then finally, they wanted to allow staff flexibility to reduce the minimum setback during averaging based on topographic issues. I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I do have one speaker lined up, Mr. Bill McLean. If you state your name and address, you have a flexible three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mayor. Counsel, Bill McLean. I am a real estate and land use attorney in Austin, Texas. And I live at 2402 Rockmore Avenue. And I am here on behalf of Tylerville Limited and to speak to you about the riparian corridor ordinance generally and also as it relates to this property that's on the screen, which is at the corner of San Gabriel Parkway and US 183. There's a lot of lines on this map, but if you, if you look at the top legend, you'll see the 100-year floodplain is shown in light blue. The 25-foot from the 100-year floodplain is shown in red and the purple line represents 100 feet from the center line of the creek. And basically, as it relates to this site, the property can't meet either standard, either the 25-foot or the 100-foot standard, which eliminates improvements that are critical to the, to the project. You'll see in the bottom right-hand corner, pond number one, that's an excavated pond. So my understanding from reading of the ordinance is that, is that that would be not permissible in that area. And then we've got a building over on parcel one and another pond that are eliminated, but which would be allowed if they were to remain outside the 100-year floodplain. And so as it relates to this property, now Tylerville has been in lengthy discussions with staff about this property and hopefully that results in a resolution. But the, another question is, is the ordinance, the ordinance on its face, it has to hold up under Texas legal scrutiny and that's one thing I want to focus on. And I know your attorney, I've worked with her for a number of years, I have tremendous amount of respect for her. And I know that she can advise you. I wanted to give you some perspective from the developer and the property rights perspective, which I will freely admit, that is, that is where I am. I'm on that side of it. So but the leading case in Texas on regulatory takings is the Mahew case or it's one of the leading cases. And what our, what our focus is really on this is does the riparian corridor ordinance in any form, does it, does it meet that first test? These are, these are the tests that an ordinance has to meet in order to hold up under Texas law. And specifically, does it advance a legitimate government interest? And I will tell you that I haven't been involved in this matter for that long. I haven't been involved long enough to see the studies.
Continue.
Thank you, sir. Or any of the reports. I don't know what's in them. But you know, we have a question. When you put the ordinance on top of other city regulation, other state, federal, and county regulation that a developer has to adhere to, does protecting and preserving wildlife in this 25-foot area advance a legitimate interest? And when you look at it, as it relates to this tract, it is, you can see it's questionable. If you, if you look at the difference between the blue line and the red line on this property which backs up to a creek and is a commercial shopping center project essentially, does that additional 25 feet really result in, in the stated purpose of the ordinance? So that's one thing that in evaluating the ordinance that we hope that you all will look at. The cities have the ability to, to accomplish these goals through different means. You have your regulatory powers and then you have your other functions such as your ability to go out and acquire parkland. The City of Austin does bonds every once in a while where they go out and acquire open space. And the question is whether this is appropriate as a regulatory function or as one of the other city functions that, that you have available to you. Our request is, and I'll tell you that we will continue to work with staff on this and as I said, we're hopeful that that results in a resolution that works for us. What we would ask you to do before you do anything on the riparian corridor is just take a hard look at it and, and make sure that it holds up under these tests of Texas law, the Mahew case, and then also the, I'm not going to take up any more of your time with this boring legal speak, but, but the Stafford case as well is one that I think needs to be looked at with respect to the riparian corridor ordinance in general and also with any changes that you make. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The public hearing is still open. I don't have anybody signed up, but anybody else like to speak on this item? All right, so now I'm going to close the public hearing and we're going to move to discuss and consider action on amending the subdivision ordinance to amend the riparian corridor provisions and to provide for related matters, Leander, Williamson, and Travis Counties, Texas.
I was hoping to ask the speaker a question.
He can come back.
Okay. Hi, sorry. So when P&amp;Z got done with this last week, or a couple of weeks ago, they added in some changes, including allowing building in the riparian as long as you were two feet above the base floor elevation, as well as some flexibility for the averaging. Would that affect your ability to build what you want to build?
Well, I can go back to that slide.
He'll come, he'll come back.
Okay. I believe the, one of the main problems is with the detention pond or two of the ponds. Luckily, I have our land planner here, Pete Predicchio. He didn't expect to be called up here, but I believe, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's one of the main problems is pond number one is not a structure, obviously, and it involves excavation, which is, takes it out of the allowable ponds for the, for the riparian corridor setback.
So I had a question about that and maybe you might be a good one to answer the question. So when you look at what P&amp;Z wanted, which is the two, an additional two feet, I'm sorry, you, Pete, or is he? Repeat, right? So when you look at the two feet that they added, would that apply within the 100-year floodplain? Does that make any sense?
Where do they add two feet?
They're talking about the elevation, not the.
It's always the challenge when you're looking at a horizontal plain line, saying 20 feet, 25 feet out versus looking at the vertical. Yeah, I could show you this piece of land, and again, obviously, since our firm is working on it, I know it well, I know several other, you've asked me this, Mayor, before at other meetings about how many properties we work on riparian corridors and it's significant. And there's a lot of them, such as this, that it's a rather flat plateau plane adjacent to the floodplain, that to raise it up two feet is probably going to be a significant amount of fill and create all kinds of other engineering and, you know, drainage issues associated with it. There will be other properties such as things along, you know, San Gabriel that 25 feet... There will be other properties, such as things along, you know, San Gabriel, that 25 feet, naturally, you're 20 feet out of the floodplain vertically already. So it's a case-by-case basis, and it's always kind of the challenge, is trying to take a broad brush to look at something at the horizontal. Hope I answered your question.
What are other cities doing? Can you shed some light on that? For instance, you know, Cedar Park, Round Rock, cities that are next to us?
Primarily, they're the center lines, and we've had this conversation before. It's just, it's center lines, it's not nearly as significant of a center line. Or, you know, such as like Georgetown, Georgetown is a center line. Or you can go into a watershed analysis and determine what the 100-year would be and go through an analysis process, which typically then does reduce the corridor buffers that are required. So there's kind of ways to work towards that end goal that Bill was talking about without just putting a universal approach to citywide policy.
Is that something where the applicant can request that?
The applicant, specific to that, when the applicant has the right, the choice to go through that process. Obviously, it's their own funds to do the engineering studies to determine if they have that right.
And does that then go back to the staff, or does it go to council? Or do you know what, and that may be a tough question for you to answer.
I know it goes to staff. I don't believe it goes to council.
Okay.
Just staff. Thanks.
So one of the changes on here is allow for stormwater detention structures to cross the riparian corridors. Does this not qualify?
Specific to this one, if stormwater is allowed within that 25-foot, then specifically to this, this would work, I believe.
Great.
Yeah, that was a P&amp;Z recommendation. I'm sorry, can you please say?
Apparently not.
Apparently not.
So it says it's allowed within the corridor setback when the detention occupies a narrow footprint similar to a utility or roadway crossing. So it'd be like a street crossing, the way that one's oriented, that's kind of up against the creek. It's not a crossing.
So would it hurt anything if we took out the qualifiers that narrow it and just allow detention in areas? Or?
I defer to Wayne.
Mr. Watts.
So if you don't mind while Wayne's on the way up here, just so everyone understands, there's already an approved PUD on this, so any changes you make to this doesn't impact this. They've already got an approved PUD with different setbacks.
Move the building another 10 feet and put in a waiver for reduced parking requirements?
Well, I might ask Michael New to put up the, what's in the PUD right now as far as repairing corridor.
So the reason for speaking on this is just to point out that in this case, were it not a PUD, that this ordinance would be difficult. Is that what I'm getting?
I believe that's really more the intent. I mean, I've just kind of been pulled up here, my apologies. But I'm here for the next case, or the next item. But that's my understanding, was Bill was just using this as a property-specific issue, but really for the council as a city-wide ordinance change. We're just talking specifically to this point.
But we were able to work around it for you.
Yeah, the PD ordinance is actually, we have an amendment in for the PUD ordinance as well. And that, in that PUD, the riparian corridor setback was moved around. And there's a long history of this, and discussions with staff and so forth. And there was even a period of time when the thought was that the riparian corridor setback was going to go away entirely as it related to commercial property. So, but we have, we even have an issue with the RCO setback as it is set forth in the PUD. Yes, ma'am.
Is that this one above that we're looking at here? So it looks like we took out, we removed everything in red, so that was a significant portion of the property.
Yes, ma'am. And then, and then this, since that time, the detention pond, that pond number one in the bottom right-hand corner, got relocated. And that was what caused us to submit the PDD amendment, which would basically, the PDD amendment request is to basically move the setback, is to basically take the setback away and make the setback equal to the 100-foot, 100-year floodplain.
So I have a question for you regarding the Georgetown provision, where it allowed the applicant to incur their own costs but do an analysis. I forgot what type of analysis you were talking about. Is that something that would have helped your process in getting that last one approved?
Specific to this property?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, because there's already a defined 100-year floodplain here.
Okay.
And so in Georgetown, it's the way that they do, it's basically drainage ways outside of the 100-year floodplain. So I think that's, you know, so now, and this is where you're really getting to the legal stuff, where you guys are talking about 100-year floodplain and then adding additional regulation on top of the 100-year floodplain. And that's different completely than what Georgetown does.
That was one of my questions throughout, is we're already protecting the waterway via the 100-foot, the 100-year floodplain, so now we're adding additional. It's a different scenario when there is a riparian corridor where there's no floodplain. That's a different scenario than when you're already having a huge setback.
Yes, ma'am. And that is, that's really a big part of our presentation is, you have to take a hard look at the ordinance itself, you know, not just as it applies to this property, although this property is a really good example of where you're packing in a development that if you're going to get a commercial center on this tract, basically, it's next to impossible to design it and comply with the RCO setback. And, but when you, to your point, when you have all the litany of regulation, you know, you have tree protection, you have parkland requirements, you have, and I understand there's fees in lieu of, but, and you have water quality through TCU, and you have, you know, endangered species regulation through US Fish and Wildlife. You know, when you put all those together, do those accomplish the same kind of purpose? And like you said, when you have the floodplain there already, does Leander's ordinance, which says let's protect wildlife by having this additional 25 feet, really accomplish a legitimate governmental purpose? That's the main question.
Exactly. And then my question regarding, you can build in the riparian corridor if you build up two feet. Is that building up the land or putting in a two-foot concrete foundation?
That's strictly related to the finished floor elevation being two feet above the 100-year flood elevation.
So either or?
And if being outside, first off, you start out, start out above the 100-year flood elevation, because that's the definition of the boundary of the 100-year flood. So the property outside that boundary is somewhat higher, obviously. And that was something that the P&amp;Z decided that they wanted to recommend.
I think one of the things we've talked about in the past is making sure we're not passing ordinances without understanding the economic impact of such ordinances, not to mention landowner rights. So that part in particular concerns me.
Can I request that we get a copy of what you've provided for us tonight?
Absolutely. And I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to write a letter to Paige with a more, you know, lengthy argument, developed argument, if you will. I know this kind of presentation, it's hard to really say everything I would say.
Especially in three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. And it's also, you know, not something y'all hear every day, so I'd be happy to provide whatever.
I feel like before we take any action on this, I'd like to send it back to staff, particularly Paige, and make sure we get it right before we change anything. There's no sense in doing it and redoing it. Let's just get it right the first time.
I'll be happy.
I agree. I would like to add, if we could clarify the definition of the riparian corridor, our city definition is different than some of the standards, the LCRA and Texas Water Development Board. Most of them refer to a regularly running water or stream. And I don't believe that our definition says that.
I think it's because the purpose and the stated purpose for our riparian corridor is to protect the additional growth that's along that corridor.
If there's a running stream.
If there's, well, and sometimes it's not a running stream, but it's a natural waterway anyway. And whether it's dry in the summer or not. But I do have a question for Wayne, because I'm not sure I'm correct on this, but weren't, didn't our old ordinance allow construction within that floodplain?
We do not prohibit it. You are, if you're going to do any work in a floodplain, you have to submit a floodplain development permit. Staff has to review what you're going to do and, you know, sign off on it.
Is that within the riparian or the floodplain?
That is within, that, well, it depends on how you define riparian, but it's within the 100-year floodplain.
So they would not have to do that today in land if it was outside the 100-year floodplain, but it was within the, what currently the riparian is?
As I understand Counsel Person's Stevenson's question, it has to do, can they develop, can you in Leander today develop within the floodplain? Many cities prohibit any development within the 100-year floodplain. And it's commonly thought that that's the case, and most developers don't attempt to do that. But as our ordinances stand today, because it is the baseline minimum required FEMA ordinance, you can develop in a floodplain area, and in some cases, it makes sense to do so because that floodplain may be a backwater effect that has nothing to do with conveying flows and protecting property. So we do allow that today, but you do have to go through a process to verify that what you're doing is not going to have any negative impacts.
So, well, hold on. My question was, beyond the 100-year floodplain, but it's within a riparian, would they have to do the same thing?
Would they have to?
Would they have to do the analysis that you're just talking about with them?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, so what would they do?
Well, I'm not sure, Mayor, I'm not sure. Can we start?
The riparian is outside.
Can we start your question over again? I'm a little bit confused.
If there's a riparian outside the 100-year floodplain, can they build in it?
Not today.
So they can build in the floodplain if they go through the analysis?
The riparian quarter, the riparian quarter ordinance, you know, prevents them from building in the riparian quarter. That is a buffer. And I might note, you know, when it comes to defining riparian quarters, you know, LCRA doesn't use that term. They use the term buffer, stream buffer, or just buffer area. And it applies to whether it's a wet weather stream, a drainage swell, or a flowing creek. For that matter, at times, you know, Sandy Creek dries up, and so does Blockhouse Creek and Brushy Creek, that type of thing. It's not necessarily, LCRA doesn't define it or limit it to flowing streams.
So the question I have, Wayne, is if, is there always a riparian outside the 100-year floodplain?
That is, it depends on if you, there can be under today's ordinance, based on drainage basins, and based on the distance from the center line of the drainage way under consideration.
So if you say that they can build in the 100-year floodplain if they do this analysis, but the riparian says they can't build in the riparian, you just said they couldn't do that, and they can't do that.
That's correct. Yes, sir. That's correct.
So making the riparian corridor, I'm sorry. Just, I'll just say, make a quick statement. So making the riparian corridor plus, floodplain plus 25 can be very strict. And our whole idea here is to try to get it less strict. So I think we need to really examine this a lot.
It should just be the 100-year floodplain?
Maybe so. I'm sorry, Christine, go ahead.
Okay, you don't disagree.
Mr. Kegel, do you have a comment?
We're done.
No, we're not. No, we're not. Mr. Watts, I started to ask a really long time ago about detention ponds in the riparian. And as much as we got into it, it was said something about it could be done if it was a narrow piece of land?
I believe that's being handled the way it's crossing. One of the things that I didn't consider or think about until tonight is I actually have a drainage study underway, which may do an own-channel regional facility. And I would like the ability to do that not be precluded from doing that by ordinance, of our own ordinances. So that's certainly something to discuss.
I think we need more examination on this. Wait, well, at least let me finish this study.
Wait. I did not completely understand that answer. I'm sorry. If this piece of land, what I'm getting at, is if this piece of land was cut in half horizontally, and it's just that narrow strip where we see the red and the green, would that give them the ability currently to, or under this amendment here, to build those detention ponds that they're talking about that currently would not be able to?
Not in my opinion.
Okay. Why is that?
Because it doesn't meet the intent of the ordinance, because it is not crossing the riparian quarter. It's not a small impact similar to a roadway. You'll be talking about something in a neighborhood of 50, 60, 100 feet of impact. That's as I read the ordinance now. I might note, and I need, I would rather have Robin answer this. In the ordinance that's in your packet, Robin, where are those exceptions?
This right here.
But, right, but those exceptions are not in the actual.
So the ordinance in the packet was what the council had proposed. And so we presented P&amp;Z as a separate attachment.
But, okay, but they are also, right now, they're considering this ordinance and how they might amend it or supplement it or make changes in it.
Right, so there's an ordinance in the packet that was based on the language that council discussed with the engineer at that previous meeting. Then the commission made recommendations, so we included a copy of that, so you knew what they recommended.
Okay.
So Wayne, my question is, again, we, I read a letter when we started this. We kind of beat this around a few times already, so, you know, and the letter was, the letter was from somebody that has a degree in this, and it said that the 100-year floodplain encompasses, and it was like 95% of riparian corridors.
I wouldn't necessarily disagree with, that's basically true.
So we're arguing over the extreme other issues, right? Why could we not adopt something that said you can build? Well, we have ordinances about the 100-year floodplain. Just use the 100-year floodplain. Why are we?
Mayor, I can answer that.
Okay.
We had a workshop with P&amp;Z, and although there was no vote, you directed us to go back and create another ordinance. But before we did that, we had an engineer from Brown and Gay that came up and gave you this ordinance, which actually made it less developer-friendly. We had instruction to make it more developer-friendly, and that's what we were doing. But then we got instructed from the DICE here to come up with the ordinance that you were presented tonight. And then P&amp;Z worked around it and tried to make it a little more developer-friendly. But we were doing what we were told to do from the engineer that came and made the presentation.
So are we, when we, when we give you direction to do things like that, are you looking, A, are we looking at what other cities doing, comparing it to what we're doing? Are we looking, you know, I mean, we keep hearing, we talk to an engineer, and then when we get up here, we hear something that's reasonable from another engineer, and our own engineer says something entirely different tonight. So I guess I'm confused, because it seems like we started down the right path. We got diverted to go back to P&amp;Z, and then that is what led us on this merry-go-round that ends up where we're at. Look, I'm going to make a motion that we pass it, that we pass it and base it on the 100-year floodplain, and that we give some sort of deference to staff for that 5% where it is an extreme situation. Now, tell me what that looks like.
I mean, it's still going to maintain a stream buffer. I mean, it's very common for cities to preclude development within the 100-year floodplain, and I don't think you're going to get any huge issues from the development community about that, because they do expect that. There may be some circumstances where you can't, where we might want to consider to allow somebody to develop in a backwater area, which is all they're doing. For example, 183. For example, 183, you might call that a weir or a dam, and it's got limited size openings in it. At certain times, we get backwater effect there that may put, put, put the land in, you know, underwater during the 100-year storm. Now, they could easily fill that land and break it above the 100-year floodplain, uh, 100-year, BFE, base flood elevation, and develop that property. Though, I mean, we have the ability to do that now. I think it's reasonable to still allow that to occur on, but it sure is complicating this discussion with all the various, uh, ins and outs and exceptions. But basically what you're saying, I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with what you're proposing, Mayor. Uh, I would add that the 100-year floodplain is only established by FEMA for air, drainage areas of a certain size, typically, you know, 640 acres. So for smaller areas, if, if, if it's not identified by FEMA, there may be some important areas along streams, because we are at the, we're at the, Leander lies along two basins. We got a basin boundary, so we're in headwaters of Colorado and headwaters of Brushy Creek. There may be some areas along Brushy Creek that are heavily wooded along streams that we might not want to touch.
How would you identify those today?
About with a engineering study, uh, drainage study that would be performed by the developer's engineer and approved, reviewed and approved by the city, make sure that the numbers were correct.
So if we said we would allow, or we would change it to the 100-year floodplain, and at staff's direction, uh, in those instances that you think are appropriate, that that study would be done?
Yes, sir, basically it would be the language that is in the draft ordinance in your packet under item number two, on page two, number two, which, other, other than striking the 25 feet, this is based on what, what was proposed or discussed at the last council meeting. With the 64, anything below 64 acres wouldn't apply. 64 and above, they have the opportunity, you know, they would have to do a 100-year flood study, or they may default back to, you know, some distance from a center line if they didn't wanna spend, you know, $10,000 doing a drainage study.
Mr. Watts, excuse me, does that include the blue lines that we see on the?
Yes, ma'am, that is, yes, ma'am.
So you can have a blue line designated as a waterway that isn't in the floodplain?
You're talking about on the USGS maps where you see a blue line. That varies, I'm not sure what their minimum area is before they draw that. We, we're gonna have areas that are certainly, that would qualify. Uh, I don't think you'll have anything identified by FEMA as 100-year floodplain that's not gonna be shown as a blue line. But the issue is, you know, do you want, what, what is your, what is your minimum drainage basin that you wanna consider in this process? And, uh, you, I mean, you may, you may wanna have, provide staff some latitude. The ordinance, uh, here doesn't really provide staff any latitude to make any determinations that maybe it's not appropriate.
The proposed or the existing?
There, there may not be a riparian quarter there, or any stream buffers, green belts. You know, we're calling this a riparian quarter, I, I look at it more as a green belt than as, when, when this city is, you know, 200,000 people in the next 20 years, concrete, asphalt, rooftops everywhere, I think green belts are gonna be important to the folks that live here.
But don't we already have the parkland dedication that helps us with that?
It, it does.
So this is just another?
Not, not universal, but I mean, you know, that, that certainly is part of it, yes, ma'am.
I, I feel like parkland and greenbelt are two entirely different things. But more importantly, I feel like the stated goal, when we put this up for discussion to begin with, was to be more flexible with development. And I feel like we're going in the wrong direction. So I, I don't think that taking any action on this tonight would be a responsible move. Again, I'd, much like the conversation we had during the workshop, the work session, there's no sense in pushing something through just to get something done. I'd rather slow it down and get it right, and get the input from the people that it impacts, and take into consideration some of these specific instances so that it doesn't force us to have staff make interpretations along the way. If we create an ordinance with some of these stipulations and variances built in, I think it will be a cleaner process for both the development community and for our staff.
But is it, aren't we today asking staff to make those same determinations, the way the current ordinance is written?
I'm not saying we leave it as it is, I'm saying let's, if we're gonna revisit it, let's do it purposely.
We've heard from so many people so far, and none of us, quite frankly, has the knowledge, if you really wanna get down to it. So we've got a lot of competing, you know, ideas and proposals, and, you know, I look at the cities around us. You know, I look at the fact that their ordinances don't say anything about a riparian. Their, their, their guidelines are, are the 100-year floodplain, and the fact that the 100-year floodplain takes in, you know, almost all the riparians anyway. And if they're gonna build in the 100-year floodplain, they've gotta do the study and the analysis on it at their cost. I don't know what else we're looking for. So I'm gonna make a motion today that we, we pass it, um, we, along the 100-year floodplain, we include the ability for staff to ask for an analysis on those areas at the applicant's cost that we deem to be outside the 100-year floodplain, but might be relevant to that situation. So that's my motion.
I'll second, but just to clarify, the ordinance that's here before us has all sorts of stipulations of setbacks. You're making a motion to pass the ordinance, but take away all, all riparian, I'll definitely second that.
Absolutely. So we have a first and second, um, you know, Mr. Simon?
Thank you. So I, you know, I, I wanna go back a little bit and just state that, you know, the expert that I think, Mayor, that you brought in, he's the one that gave us the LCRA ordinance that we, I, we have rejected. And then we asked P and Z to look at it, and they've, to, to provide more flexibility, and we're rejecting that. And I, I like P and Z's, but I kind of, you know, if we're trying to make things easier for, for developers, having all these options and just a lot of language in there that makes things, uh, more confusing, maybe I'm just too simple. But I, I, I think we're making this a lot more complicated than what it should be, and I, I.
Well, my proposal is to make it really easy.
I kind of agree with you.
The 100-year floodplain.
I kind of agree with you, I, I like some of the things in here, but.
The 100-year floodplain, I mean, we, we talk all the time about, you know, that was a, a commercial property. We talk all the time about, you know, making our town more attractive for commercial development. And that's exactly, you know, at some point, I think we have to actually take action and make that happen. And this is not anything that other cities are doing.
This one here where it is a PUD, couldn't they have asked for waivers on?
So you wanna make them go through the PUD process?
Well, there already, it already is a PUD.
Well, in this case, but I hate to. I, I hate to draft ordinance that requires a PUD to accomplish something that we're all pretty much in agreement with.
And, and again, let's remember, the 100-year floodplain is established by FEMA. It encompasses, again, almost all riparians, which Wayne agreed with. This makes it really easy, and it gives staff the latitude in those small number of situations where a study maybe is necessary. And then it's the applicant's cost for that study.
How do they determine how that, when that study happens?
Well, the same way they're doing it.
He's a genius.
If there is no FEMA-identified floodplain in that area that's under consideration for development.
Okay.
I think part of the way this confusion came about, I'm just gonna trace our steps backwards a little bit. Mayor, you wanted to put the riparian issue on an agenda, and you had some experts, your engineer, come speak on it. But the problem that happened along the way is that information was not provided to council or staff prior to the meeting, and it didn't give staff an opportunity to have input on that. All I'm asking is that, I, I have no problem with you requesting input from outside, but we've got to give the process a chance to work, and that means that that information is available.
They've had this information. Why is that circumvented?
To draft this ordinance based on what was presented at a council meeting, that staff had no input on prior to that meeting.
I think we've talked about it in workshops a few times, I think that's been quite a bit.
If you don't mind, just to clear it up, we had clear direction, we felt like we had clear direction, and we were gonna bring back an ordinance that would have fulfilled your goals. In the interim, the engineer from Brown and Gay came up, made a presentation, council told us to adopt that ordinance and bring it back. And that ordinance actually, in many cases, made it more difficult for developers. Our current ordinance allows development in the floodplain, the proposed ordinance did not, from, from the Brown and Gay engineer. I think that's where everything got off the tracks.
That's what I'm saying.
And Wayne is a cert, is a FEMA-certified floodplain engineer.
So my question is, tonight, since Wayne is a FEMA-authorized engineer, and Wayne is entirely comfortable.
Certified floodplain manager.
There you go, sorry.
And Wayne is.
So very skilled there.
We're using the same things other cities use. We've got him saying he's okay with it, we've got land engineers saying that it's the correct way to go. What's the problem with adopting it?
Well, I think we don't know what we're adopting is the problem.
Exactly.
I don't know what we're adopting. I, I can't vote on something I don't know, it's so convoluted right now, I have no idea where we're going and what direction.
Okay, it's using the 100-year floodplain.
Repeating it isn't making it clear. The point is, this is something you threw on the table at the DIAS during a conversation, not something that we had time to research, review, and look at with backup information prior to this meeting. And all we're asking for is to defer this to a later meeting when we have time to do that.
What is it that you wanna see?
I want, I just answered.
I mean, what is it you want him to do?
When we had the first workshop on this, we were told we were going to get visuals. And what we got were two visuals, one of which was in an area that we can't even change because it's Travis County. Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I would like to see how it affects different areas throughout the city, so I make sure that I'm voting on the right thing.
Agree.
Yeah, I'd like a presentation where I can see exactly what's gonna happen in these streams and be shown on the map saying, okay, with this ordinance, this is what's gonna happen here, this is what's gonna happen there. Um, to have those visuals, it's a little bit easier to see than to read what's gonna go on here.
Well, I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, before the whole riparian ordinance was created, we went by the 100-year floodplain?
Basically, yes, it, it was, it was, you know, it was informal.
That's right.
And expected from the development community, they, they typically have no plans to develop in a flood, in a flood-prone area.
That's right. So here we are again, where ordinances were created, and we have seen that they're legally challenging by a professional attorney who gave us his, his opinion on it, and our planning department struggles with this, engineering struggles, and landowners are believing that this is a land-taking. So, to me, I don't need to see a presentation to say, on the new ordinance, get rid of the riparian setback, stick with the 100-year floodplain, and leave anything that is a blue line, not in the floodplain, up to your discretion.
I don't understand what's complicated about it.
I'm not saying that I disagree. I'm saying I'm not ready to pull the trigger on it.
Right, we're kinda blindsided by it, this wasn't discussed or in our packet at all. Um, Mr. Watts, since some areas were developed just using the floodplain and without the riparian requirements, do you happen to know of any off the top of your head that, any areas of town that were developed that way, that we could kind of think of as a visual? It's okay if you don't, I'm sorry, it's totally on the spot.
Oak Creek would be one, but, uh, I think there's not a home or a lot. I mean, there's parkland along, they satisfied their parkland dedication, you know, partially through using the, uh, you know, parkland dedication within the 100-year floodplain. But the homes and so forth are not built in the floodplain, the development is outside of the floodplain. Of course, the floodplain is crossed with a, you know, with Broad Street, with a bridge and so forth.
Would that development be significantly changed?
On your question or not, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, just would that development have been significantly changed under our current rules with the riparian? If you know. Sorry, it's very hypothetical. It would be? Is it okay if I defer to Mr. Vardiquo?
Well, we're talking about, you're, you're talking about the buffer, the riparian buffer would have been 100 feet from the center line of Brushy Creek, there, far Oak Creek, and I don't think there are any lots within 100 feet of the center line of.
Mayor, we do have a motion and a second on the table, I think we need to call that vote before we move too much further down this path.
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody's denying that, Mayor, that, that motion is, is great. I think just some people are asking for, for more time to have something in writing, something with the ordinance, something that legal will look at to, you know, have it happen at the next meeting or something.
I'm not necessarily opposed to voting tonight if we can finish getting our questions answered, we've got people here that can answer them.
That's right.
That's fair.
One, one thing that, that might help in, in this discussion and identifying what you're wanting to do, is I understand the mayor's motion is basically to adopt the, the draft ordinances in front of you with striking the 25 feet from item two on page two.
I already wanted to strike everything.
Well, it's really striking the 25 feet, I mean, when you come down to it.
But that's what, that's where I'm saying, I'm not clear, because we're back and forth on that.
Right, is that, is that the only thing we're striking? I mean.
Yes, because once you strike the 25, 50, 100-foot riparian setback, you don't need all these variances to say, okay, you can build there if you build up two feet. We've now removed the need for those, correct?
Not necessarily.
Okay, explain.
Arterial streets, I mean, you need.
Well.
Well, they currently can do that.
Now, you know, I'm getting confused now, so, um, taking things one thing at a time, as I understand what's on the floor for a vote and subject to your correction, is that what you're proposing to do is you're keeping the, obviously, you're keeping Highland Lakes, you're not touching that. That's in the ordinance, but it's, it just reflects exactly what LCRA does. Outside of the Highland Lakes area, basically inside of Williamson County. What you're saying now is, is I understand what's on the floor. Creeks, rivers, draining more than 64 acres shall have a minimum repair, repairing, uh, shall have a riparian quarter setback of the 100, consisting of the 100-year floodplain as designated by FEMA or as determined by a drainage study performed by a professional engineer registered in Texas and approved by the city engineer. That's what I understand is on the floor at the mayor, is that correct?
Striking the 25.
So it's, 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 in black and white, it's on page two, item two of the draft ordinance in your packet.
When you say black and white, you mean red?
Well, mine's, mine's.
Oh, okay, ours is red.
It's, isn't it also option two, the floodplain buffer zone on page two?
Uh, o, option two is just, that's still in the, that's still in the Highland Lakes area.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's just repeat of the LCRA current ordinance.
Okay.
Mayor, would you still have the, um, staff recommendations for arterial and collector streets and stormwater detention and all the other?
Yes.
Excuse me, do you need all of those amendments if we remove the riparian setback? For the streets and the drainage?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
In, in the, in the instance that it falls in the Highland Lakes section?
Well, Highland Lakes, we can't touch Highland Lakes, but, um, a strict interpretation of item two may preclude roadway crossings, you know, utility crossings, parallel interceptors.
I would ask that, maybe look over those during, and before second reading and make sure they need to be included or not.
That's, we can certainly do that, we'll have that issue resolved on the second reading.
So we, do we ask for a second reading?
If there is a second reading, if there's a first reading.
We, we really need to wait, I think we need to wait and get this.
So, Ms., Mr. Watts?
Yes, sir.
If we could all raise our hands, please. So my question to you is, if we pass this as it's been stated tonight, do we need to add the language in about, um, the, the small percentage that's outside the 100-year floodplains, or would this be accepted as it is?
Item two includes that language if that is your intent.
Okay. Okay.
But it's als, it's also accepting any drainage basin that is under 64 acres as it, as item two is reading, written, if, if that is your intent.
And so the only thing we would be doing is striking the 25 foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it would still give you the opportunity to, um, to, for those small percentages to be able to adjust off of that, to meet the, to meet something outside the ordinary?
A blue line, not in the floodplain.
Yeah.
Okay, um, um, that's not computing for me, I apologize. Can you clarify for me?
So if the, if there is a riparian outside the 100 year floodplain, could you address that as the ordinance as were?
Uh, uh, i, if I'm understanding what you're saying, when, I mean, repairing, just, I want to say repairing corridor is an arbitrary definition, we make it whatever we want to make it.
That's the problem.
And, I mean, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's not based on engineering study like a FEMA floodplain or like a 100 year floodplain will be determined for areas less than 640 acres and greater than six, than 64 acres as contemplated here. As I understand it, say, say we had a, 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 a large stand of hardwoods along a, a, a small drainage way or something like that that's outside of the FEMA floodplain. Well, you know, we do have a tree ordinance that addresses that, so there is some protection there.
Okay.
And I, Mayor, I don't know if I hit the mark with your question or not, so.
And Mr. Watts, one final question?
I'm sorry.
Christine is raising her hand.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see, I couldn't see her.
Just a quick question, um, can you refresh our memory on what's going on with the, the current status of the 100 year floodplain? Isn't it currently changing under some new FEMA regulations?
It, it is indeed. Right now, the upper Brushy W C I D, oh Lord, he took a 2012 snapshot, went through a total hydraulic and out, you know, H and H, determine new floodplain boundaries. Uh, that data was submitted to FEMA 2014. It's been held up for several years now. It's 2019 and we're looking at 2012 snapshot that is probably going to come effective in September of this year. After that, in the upcoming budget, there's going to be significant amount of funds for us to do, to update that study to our current snapshot of 2019. And at that point, it's going to become a living model that we'll end up modifying based on our no detention policy in the T O D area. So, I mean, i, i, it is, it is going, it is in the process of being modified. It constantly is at some point in time. People, people, uh, perform, uh, climbers and lomers letters of map revision based on work that they do in a stream or work that they do on property to take property out of a floodplain. We've got that going on right now in the South Fork and North Fork of Brushy Creek with T V I.
So in general, the new data that you're seeing, uh, the changes that it will make to the existing floodplain, is it going to stay about the same, get larger or get smaller?
It's, in some places it gets larger, in some places it gets smaller. I don't have a, I don't have a, a, a pat answer on that as a case by case basis.
Thank you.
So my motion, I'm going to revise my motion to pass it as, as brought forth with the exception that we're striking the 25 foot.
And to number two.
Marcy made the second. Do you agree to the revision?
I agree to the revision.
Okay.
Pass it, I'm sorry, just to clarify, pass it as, as is, except for on page two, item number two, A, we're removing setback of 25 feet.
Counsel.
I just have a question, uh, changing the riparian, does that change anything with parkland dedication?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You know, just want to.
I'm sorry, you had a sand, right?
I'm sorry, he has finger raised. You had your finger raised, that wasn't technically following.
Mayor, I just want to make sure your motion, is it, is your motion to pass the staff recommendation or the P and Z recommendation or?
The staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation.
The ordinance as it was submitted to us.
Well, I.
It's right there. It was.
The, the one that was submitted to us was the P and Z recommendation, right?
No, it wasn't.
No, it was, that was the, it's the staff recommendation.
The, the ordinance that was submitted to us was the staff and council recommendation?
Well, I'll raise my hand.
I asked Robin.
Mr. Kegel?
No, no, staff never got to make, I, I mean, we recommended this because you told us to. We, we never had a recommendation. We never put an ordinance together. This was from the engineer from Brown and Gay.
Okay.
And I, I think it's important, i, i, if you do this, that you understand. And, and, and maybe I'm wrong, so we'll have Wayne answer. But under our current ordinance, forget all this, you could develop in the floodplain.
Yes, sir.
If this proposal is a, forget, so you remove the 25 foot, it, does it not forbid development in the floodplain?
That's correct.
I, I think y'all need to understand that.
So this is my point, I might even be able to support what you're putting forth, but you're, I feel like you're kind of shoving it down our throats. I, I don't want to vote against this. I don't want to vote on it, period. But I, again, if we can push this out and get clarification and clean up some of this stuff and trying to, instead of trying to do it right here on the fly, I would feel much better about making a decision on this.
Okay, so.
Just, I'm just putting that out.
I'm willing to do that if we give them direction about what it is, and I think we.
You seem very clear and to your, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be sparring, but you seem like you are very clear. I am not clear on what you're saying. If you can give them clear direction and bring it back so that we can evaluate it in black and white and not remove this and add that, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that.
Well, I would be removing the 25 foot.
Okay.
Yeah, but I.
I think what we want to do is do the P and Z recommendation.
Well, Mayor.
Mine is the 25 feet.
No.
I apologize. I think it might help your discussion if you remove your motions off, in your second off the floor. Because right now you're talking about changing things.
Thank you.
Okay, I will withdraw my motion.
I will withdraw my second.
And so what you're asking is, I am not, uh, comfortable with adding the P and Z recommendations.
What, what part?
The whole thing.
It offers more flexibility than what your motion.
In which way? Why would it be more flexible?
But we take away the 25 feet, like you said, but we still have the setbacks, we still have the ability to build in the floodplain.
But wouldn't that be a moot point if you remove the 25 feet?
Not exactly, because this still offers more flexibility than. In the, but in the floodplain.
Only if you still have a right.
No, this is only to the right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had to look this way.
I, I would feel very comfortable, especially since some of the language in here was from, from an engineer who we just heard from for a few minutes at one of our meetings. If we did have some input from, from our, our engineer, our city engineer, who understands, actually understands what we're trying to do and, um, he's looking for direction from us on that, I would like, uh, him to give us his recommendation to accomplish this goal of making it more flexible, uh, to develop in this area. And, and what he would, and so, and so, but the language in here isn't exactly that way. And so maybe, um, bring it back to us with something that would do that.
So Mr. Watts?
Yes, sir.
Are you comfortable moving it to the 100 year floodplain?
Yes, sir.
Which takes in a huge number of the riparians, removing the 25 foot from the ordinance. But whatever the mechanism is for giving you the flexibility in situations where it is outside or there's no FEMA floodplain and maybe consideration, consideration needs to be given. Are you comfortable coming up with something to address that?
But you're, to be clear, you're asking him to make building in the floodplain 100% off the table?
No, I was, had my hand up to please make an exception to keep it the way it is and was that if someone wants to, um, file a quomor or do whatever to build in the floodplain, they can. They often don't because it's very expensive, but they have that right. So can you tack that on too?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Let me take note of that of this. Okay, so it sounds like we wanted to have an option A, which was your recommendation of, um, no setback, can't build the floodplain, or an option two where they follow.
And then no setback beyond the 100 year floodplain.
Right, right. Or an option two where they follow this ordinance that was presented to us and they can build in the floodplain. So they have two options.
If, if the flexibility now is, if they do X and Y and all these studies and talk about what they have to do to build in the floodplain, I don't want this ordinance to prohibit that.
Right.
Does that make any sense? So I want to, nothing, as far as I'm concerned, nothing would change now within the 100 year floodplain. What I'm talking about is outside the 100 year floodplain. So I don't want to go 25 feet arbitrarily that's not 100 year floodplain. I don't want to do that.
Even though this allows them to build in the floodplain?
He's, he's going to allow that.
Right.
Pro Tim has a question.
Yes.
And, and I also understand, and just to make this clear, that, that Wayne, you, you said, um, Mr. Watts, you said that, um, not all of our natural waterways and creeks are on the FEMA floodplain map?
That's correct.
That you said, and so some of those, we still want to protect the vegetation and the trees that are growing up near them.
Well, and, and what, basically what's being proposed does do that for any drainage basin, 64 acres or above.
Okay, okay.
And to be clear, is the ordinance as it's currently written, they're allowed to build in the floodplain? If they file this, that and the other, but under no circumstance are they allowed to build in the setback?
In, in the repairing corridor.
So that makes no sense for any development that you can't, so thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so we're clear going forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we table this. You feel comfortable the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, till the next council meeting?
Twenty first.
The 21st.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? All right.
Thank you. Sorry, we took some days off your life there through that.
Okay. Right, we're going to move to number 22. We're going to receive a presentation from Peter Verdicio regarding a proposed rezoning of the property located at 401 Heritage Grove, Leander Williamson County. Ms. Griffin.
This is, um, a development proposal review, um, about the property located on Heritage Grove Road. Do we need to take a recess? Sorry.
Be, that'd be good.
Tell them to be quiet or.
If I could have quiet, please, we'll take a short recess after this, please.
Okay.
Um, this is a, an item where they're presenting their proposal and there is no action. And Peter Verdicio is here.
Just give a little pause of quiet there. I was sitting there looking at, at client on this one saying, okay, we get to follow this up now. So this is why I was actually here this evening is to speak to you all about this proposal and, um, kind of got sucked into a discussion on the previous item. Glad I could contribute as I could. Appreciate your time this evening and we will keep this short, I, I promise, at least, um, from our, our side of things. I'm here this evening on behalf of the current property owner, as well as a home builder, interested in developing the property that we'll be discussing this evening. It's approximately 39 acres along U S 183. Property is currently zoned a mix of C D conventional sector along 183 as well as heavy commercial on the interior of the property, um, to the western side of it. We're here this evening to request your consideration on two critical elements associated with the plans that we're bringing before you. The first of these is consideration to amend the future land use plan as well as rezone the property. As you see from the plan up on the screen, we seek to, uh, we see consideration of commercial along U S 183 frontage. Um, and then single family compact residential for the remainder of the property, basically the western portions of it from the narrow piece back. The applicant feels that, uh, this request for consideration for a mixed use development is appropriate for this property. Because as you look at the plan, you'll see the adjoining property to the south of us has existing residential under development. And the southern property, west southern property will be a future church. And we just feel that residential and commercial is appropriate uses versus heavy commercial that's currently zoned for the property. Wrong way, my apologies. Touch quickly on the commercial and then, uh, jump to the residential. The commercial, as I just mentioned, is property along 183. With the land plan, what we're doing is trying to work with the roadways that are currently underway for some adjoining properties and we end up with some really serpentine roads there. But really, the end, the end goal is trying to create some strong commercial property. With the roadway, we're able to create two commercial tracks, each with strong, uh, corner access. And we envision this to be, um, neighborhood service, small office and that type of, uh, commercial development. The remaining property, uh, would be zoned and developed as residential. It's a 30 acre tract and at that size, we would only be seeking one required zoning district. The applicant would be seeking single family compact residential on that property and to develop that property with 45 foot residential lots. That item right there really kind of leads us to a second critical item on why we're here this evening before you and get your thoughts and feedback and kind of consider this a, a continuation of the workshop this, at this evening. Considering, um, conversations that we had there is very fitting. A, as we all know, Article eight, section 5 J restricts lots under 50 feet wide, that they have to be an alley product. The home builder this evening is seeking your, um, recommendations, input, feedback on, on seeking to build high quality, front loaded residential product. And by that, what we've done is actually brought some slides and I'm not going to go into, you know, I don't want to fly through these, on the other hand, I don't want to go through them slide by slide, item by item. But what I will do is describe it as, um, this Pulte group, they've done, you know, nationwide focus groups, study groups, um, study their homes for livability, architecturally for today's modern families, modern living, that sort of thing. And, and really, the way I would describe this is it's a mix of modern farmhouse and modern hill country. And what they've done, it was very fitting that we had the conversation earlier today, this evening, because when you start looking at some of this, by today's current city codes, we wouldn't comply. But when you start looking at things like the porches, the varied roof lines, um, the, the varied materials, you know, again, it's not a monotone, single brick, it's stone, it's cementitious materials. Really kind of gives you that, that modern crisp edge that families are seeking in homes today. And with that, I would just, uh, thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation to you. I'll admit, this is my first time coming before a council with a plan review. I'm not quite sure what the next step is, but, you know, should we receive direction and kind of continue exploring this and moving forward? We would, uh, welcome the opportunity to continue working with staff and perhaps council members, as was talked about earlier, about trying to incorporate architectural elements that ensure that the quality material and housing and architecture you just saw would be incorporated into a P D D moving forward.
Does your, is there anticipation of requesting a P I D for this project?
It's my understanding that we will have to because part of it is within the conventional district.
A P I D?
Uh, P I D, I'm sorry, I thought you said a P D D, I'm sorry, no P I D, not that I'm aware of, no P I D.
That's a really good answer.
I'm, I'm sorry.
You were going down real fast.
My apologies, I misheard you, no P I D, absolutely not.
You were thinking PUD, we call them PUD.
Council member, set a question.
Thank you. Hey, I had a couple of questions. Um, I actually drove around, um, one of the developments where these are already being built and, uh, i, in person. They look really nice, not as brown. I had a couple of questions, uh, they struck me as, as looking to be very affordable because they're not as, you know, they're not completely brick all the way around and, and they look like great, um, like starter homes. Do you have a price point that you're looking to sell them at?
So currently, Nick McIntyre, Pulte. Currently, we are targeting the 227 to the 277, 287 price range.
Okay.
Uh, and obviously, if we can incorporate some of these items in there, we've got the ability.
Now, what size would that be?
Ranging from 1,400 square feet to just shy of 2,900 square feet.
And my second thing. And my second thing is, I'm looking at the map that y'all submitted, and there's ten... I'm sorry. I can't tell if that's one-point-zero acres or ten acres on the detention corner.
One-point-oh.
Okay. Looking at it on the map, it looks like it's perhaps larger than the neighborhood park that's shoved way out to the edge. I understand that, you know, each lot is how y'all make your money, but I would really like to see some parkland more central to the project, so kids aren't having to go way out by the commercial sector, especially when they're surrounded by commercial and industrial.
Sure, sure.
If this goes forward.
No, then we can take a look at that, and that's what we're looking for, is feedback like that, of what you guys may be wanting for us to be able to pursue a deal like this.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Councilmember Cannon.
Is it Cannon?
Cannon.
My... I love this, I love the design. My concern would be the heavy commercial to the east of this, of the housing. I would hate to get ourselves in a situation where actually someone comes and wants to do heavy commercial there as it's zoned, and now these homes are backed right up to it. So, have you allowed, or could you allow for some buffer back there on that side?
Yeah, and that's what we were looking at, the north-south roads, it comes through, really using that as a divide and a break. Potentially adding some more buffer along that line. Obviously, it's not very big on the little handle that we have with the property, more so to the commercial piece to the north of that.
I'm sorry, I mean the east side of the residential.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So, there's not a roadway there?
There isn't a roadway.
The east side of...
It's got the gold deposit worth?
Where the brown and the yellow meet up.
One of those things. Yeah. I was looking more.
Then again, this is just kinda beginning of a discussion.
Sure.
You know, if we heard a hell no, we knew if they closed, we'd go home.
Sure.
But if there's an interest in the dialogue, it's certainly something that we could incorporate into a PDD.
Right.
As you look at this, you can see our road system and the property line are not parallel, there's lots, we put all the extra depth there. We could explore something, doing a buffer back there, some screening, there's options that we could do back there versus just standard wood.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Something creative, that would be great.
Yeah, we're open to that.
I'm gonna go, Mr. Siler.
That was gonna be my question, is, you know, if y'all build first, and then a heavy commercial comes in there and builds after you, you know, they're gonna come to us and ask, that's why we allowed that to happen, even though it's already zoned for that. So, I would ask for some sort of... Just be on the lookout as... I don't know if that's gonna require a land use map change, or anything like that, to... As a... For anything between the heavy commercial and the single-family? Is that gonna require a future land map use change?
No, it's residential right now, where y'all are proposing single-family. Yeah, it's in the residential land use category.
It's a residential land use category.
Yeah.
Okay. It's just the zoning is the heavy commercial.
You just have a zoning change, right, right.
Okay, just wanna confirm that. And then, you know, you got about nine acres of commercial. I don't know if you had any plans on what that may be.
The seller would retain the commercial in this particular situation, we'd just be taking down the single-family.
Okay.
So, I'm not familiar exactly what their plans are, or intentions are with that at this time.
Pro-Ten.
Okay. You know, if you just want honest opinion, my honest opinion is that I'm always worried about changing anything that we have zoned commercial to residential. We have lots of areas in our whole landmass and in our city boundaries that can be residential. And I like to save what we have as commercial, because a lot of times, it's hard to get commercial, especially if it's anywhere near any kind of residential. The zoning changes can be contentious. And that's just my honest opinion, is I... It would have to be a very good reason to take commercial off of our zoning map, for me.
Okay.
And I just wanna let you know that.
No, we appreciate that.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking for, because that's like a feedback.
I feel the same way as Pro-Ten, but I also feel that the location of the commercial in Heritage Grove is not a great one, and that could be why we've seen a slow growth there. I think, you know, San Gabriel is better, one eighty-three is better. And I would be surprised if after our next comp plan, if that were to stay commercial.
And that's kinda what we were looking at, in a sense, in a holistic view, what's going on around there? And how can we create something that's gonna work with what's already been built, the residential to the south, the church, potentially the church that's on the south, due south of the deal? You know, it feels like a good transition point, and that's what we're trying to blend into the deal.
That would be my comment.
Yes.
Yes. Forgot, I'm in school. That would be my comment. I think you've done a really good job keeping that commercial at the front, you know, with the one eighty-three frontage, and I think with the residential there, it is a good buffer. I think, as someone stated earlier, I think just having a buffer on those deep, super-deep lots, I think you'd be fine. It's a good product, I think it's a good price point that's definitely needed in our area.
Sure.
I would agree. I think leaving commercial where it's called for makes more sense. And again, we got some areas that maybe are zoned residential, that should be commercial, and maybe this is one that's resident, or commercial that should be residential. So, this certainly complies with that, so I think it looks good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for the feedback.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank y'all for a very thorough presentation. This is what we intended, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Right, at this time, I think a thirteen-minute recess is appropriate. We'll reconvene at ten after eight. All right, the time is eight twelve, and we are back in session. We're gonna move to number twenty-three of our regular agenda, discuss and consider action on ordinance amending Article fourteen point oh one, point oh one oh, the code of ordinances to amend the development proposal review process, and to establish a procedure to petition the city council to initiate the process to amend the future land use map, making findings of fact, providing for related matters, and providing an effective date. Ms. Page.
Mayor and council, this ordinance was prepared pursuant to council's direction at the workshop. And what it does is it essentially follows Cedar Park's process for a petition to amend a future land use map when such is required for somebody who needs to have a zoning change that's not consistent with the underlying future land use map. And I can answer any questions you may have.
And well, to clarify, it's gonna replace what we're doing now, right?
Correct. So, the current ordinance provides the development proposal process that you just went through here, as opposed if... So, that process would be replaced by simply by someone, if they have a development that needs to have a comprehensive plan amendment, to have the zoning approved. They would go through this process to request the council authorize the process to go through the PNZ, to have the future land use map amended.
Ms. Cannon.
And so, based on the current one and this one, we're removing any zoning questions that currently, as we just heard, they are gonna need a zoning change. And I think it was okay with the future land use map. So, in that case, we would not hear them? Or is there a way that they can still come up?
Well, you wouldn't have a formalized process for someone who wants to give you a preview of a proposed zoning case that does not require a future land use amendment.
Okay.
So, that process is removed, and you would not get those anymore unless there was some other method of an item getting on the agenda. But this just...
The mayor could ask for a workshop, or...
They can ask for a workshop, and those processes were done prior to that formal process being adopted. So, there's still the ability to get on an agenda through a workshop or some other item.
Perfect.
So, to understand, if there's a zoning change required as part of what they're proposing, they would not be eligible to do what happened tonight?
If there is only a zoning change required, then they would not be able to do what was, what happened tonight.
My understanding is that we were not gonna have, because there is no process to notify neighbors, we were going to eliminate any case that would involve a potential zoning change.
All that would be brought before you, so the prior process, in the prior process, what you previewed was a proposed zoning amendment that would then go through the process. That a person could come before you, whether they're required a future land use amendment or not, under the current process. What this ordinance does is it takes away that process, and it substitutes in that, in its place, a process whereby a person who needs a future land use map amendment to have their zoning approved, it gives them a method of requesting that the council initiate that process and send it through the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city council. Part of the concern that is being addressed here is to make clear that zoning is subject to a process notice to the adjacent property owners and public hearing. And so, rather than those coming to council before they go through that normal process, that will no longer be the case unless that occurs in a workshop setting.
I'm not sure this was what I expected it to be.
Okay.
I really feel like if there is the potential for any development discussed in one of these meetings to lead to a request for a zoning change, that that's what we're trying to avoid. Because it doesn't give... The discussion was, if the neighborhood adjacent to, or neighbors of subject property have concerns that we have not heard, we could give an indication to a developer, potential developer, support that may not actually exist if that process had been borne out. So, I'm still not okay with having zoning as an element of it.
It isn't.
It isn't.
That's not what I...
Yeah, let me...
It is, but it doesn't mean that that project wouldn't have a zoning change later, that's what I'm hearing.
You're correct about that, so let me just... I was probably gonna repeat what I just said, but...
Slower for me.
There... All that will be requested as part of this process is a proposal will come to the council for a future land use map change, and that would be the extent of the proposal. And then, council would approve or disapprove the petition to move forward with an amendment to the future land use map. Your amendments to your future land use map can be initiated by the city council, by the PNZ, by the city manager. So, it's giving a process whereby the city council can respond to a request from a landowner or an applicant.
An anticipation of a zoning change.
It would be an anticipation of a zoning change.
That's my sticking point.
They would be making a future land use map amendment to support a zoning change. That would be the most likely scenario in which they would be doing that. There may be other scenarios in which they would. Even if you approve a petition to go forward for a future land use map amendment, that process in and of itself is still subject to a process whereby it has to go to the PNZ and the council with public hearings.
With notification.
And a formal application, and you've got a fee for that, you've got a process set there. What would also have to happen is a zoning change if the person, if the zoning does not allow for the proposed use, which is why they bring the petition to you. But, that applicant, you would not be giving a nod towards the zoning, they would not be asking you about the zoning. You would be authorizing the future land use map process to go forward. It's clear in the ordinance, it can be made clear in the petition, that this does not constitute an approval of a future land use map amendment. It also does not constitute any kind of support or approval of whatever zoning change that you may bring in connection with that future land use map amendment. If I understand the future land use map correctly, they're in several of these categories. There are various zoning districts that would fit within a future land use map category.
Okay.
So, you know, the applicant still has to decide which zoning district that they want to bring forward that fits within that particular land use category, and go through the process. I can't speak to what may be the public perception of the petition process without you actually having gone through it. Your sister city has this process, and they may have some anecdotal information about how that's perceived. But, as far as the legal process goes, you're still gonna have a full zoning case and zoning process that gets vetted, that notice is given, and you, this will come before you, and you will get to take in all the public input. And it's completely within your discretion to approve or deny a zoning application, make modifications as it comes before you.
As long as that is clearly outlined in the application and any paperwork disseminated to the applicant that would bring us an item to discuss under this ordinance.
Your... Cedar Park has developed a pretty good application or petition that spells that out.
Okay.
And very big font.
I like the big font.
Yes, and big font with, it might even have it being red and bold and italicized, so...
Okay.
It's probably green, knowing Cedar Park. I had a question for you. So, if somebody wanted something that would include a zoning change, and we do have a workshop, by voicing our support, we're not, you know... We're not... That doesn't put us on the hook, does it, right?
No, no, it doesn't. That's always a public perception issue to navigate and to make clear. You have precedent, and cities do this, where you have a workshop to see what's proposed. Often, it's accompanied by a request for something like a PID or some other form of city involvement. So, in those circumstances, you may decide that it makes sense to have that workshop so you can really get into some of those issues. But, it's still subject to the processes, and they still have to go through those processes. And there's no guarantees of approval until it comes before you, and you make that final decision. And there may be a bit, it may be easier in a workshop setting, since you have more time, to make that a bit clearer than you have the time to do so in a development proposal process.
I wanna hold up a big sign during these things that says...
No zoning.
You still have to go through the...
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to be clear, the current and the proposed, every, the entire packet, including our application that makes all the disclaimer, is posted online.
It will be posted online, are you talking about once it's filled out?
Once it's filled out, and they're on the agenda to come to us, just like tonight's.
It'll be in your back of materials?
Exactly. So, it's available to the public in that way, so that even the public can see that on the application, it's not changing the zoning, and it's no guarantee of zoning change, correct?
Correct. And if you want to... You can limit discussion to just the future land use map amendment during that process, and stay out of any discussion of zoning.
Here's my only concern with that. As you stated, you changed the future land use map. There are several different zonings that could apply to employment district or whatever it is. But, in tonight's example, they very specifically are bringing a smaller lot size and showing us pictures and seeing if that's something that we're interested in. That's the point of this. If we were to say, "No, we absolutely don't wanna do any forty-five-foot lots," they would know. So, is, are you considering that discussing zoning?
Yeah.
Because, then what's the point in having the development review? They're gonna show up with a concept plan, a bubble map, that says, "Here, we want residential, and here, we want commercial." And they're not gonna specify exactly what it is, and they're not gonna understand exactly what we'd like. Cedar Park allows it as you've proposed it.
Are you talking about Cedar Park allows the... Are you talking about Cedar Park allows the discussion about the proposed development as well?
Yes, the specifics of the development.
This gets to be a policy decision for the council. As you're considering a proposal for an amendment to the future land use map, though, the other thing that you would keep in mind is that there are a variety of zoning districts that are tied to that. And so, if you adopt a future land use map independent of a zoning change as it comes through the process, then you're going to, you're basically opening yourself up to a different category of uses. And that's a policy decision that you should make, keeping that in mind. When it comes to you with a zoning application, then you're able to make those decisions at the same time. But if the applicant is just going to bring a future land use map change and then zoning later, then those are things that you'll have to think about in the process. If the question is about what level of information are we looking at when we consider this, I mean, it's, it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask some of that. But then, I think some of the balance you're trying to deal with is we want to make sure the public understands that we're not, this is not a zoning change. We're not, we're not going to negate that process and negate the public input that is important and required as part of that process. And we're not telling the developer that this is, just because we say yes, we're going to approve the zoning.
We say yes to the future land use map change.
Actually, I think the yes was just going to be, yes, please proceed with the process.
Of the future land use.
Right, yes.
We think it's a worthy project.
I have a question.
Pro Tem Stevenson.
My question is, is this going to be an actual vote? Because in the language here, it says, if the city council approves the petition, an amendment to the flum will be initiated and will proceed in accordance with the procedures set forth by the city charter and state law. So it sounds like we're taking a vote on, on approving them to go forward?
That's how, that is how it is drafted.
Okay, so we're actually going to take a vote on that.
You would take a vote to authorize the initiation of the process.
Okay, so it's much more formal than what we have now then, which is just, we're chatting.
Right.
Okay.
And the reason it was drafted that way is because of the charter requiring the city, giving the city council the option to initiate the future land use map change.
Okay, okay.
If you don't vote on it, then they'd have to use one of the other forms, which is having P and Z authorize it.
Existing method.
Right, right.
So not, we're not required to vote on it, obviously, right? So we just.
If you want to remove that requirement.
What would it do legally?
Well, right now you have a process where someone can apply for a future land use map change and proceed, process it without a council vote.
So essentially. Sorry, so essentially it's like a mini workshop without a vote.
Kind of.
Well, a workshop doesn't have a vote, correct?
No.
So the question is, do we want to remove that or do we want to go forward with actually voting on it?
So my understanding was that we were modifying exactly what we do to remove zoning, period.
Okay.
How is the only change?
That's what I, that's what I understood as well, but I trust.
And I feel like that's what Mayor Powell was saying, they did. And that's why we were going to defer to their policy.
I got their, they don't have, I got their petition and their policy and.
Can't, please?
Yes. What staff heard at the retreat was to take the zoning out of it and use the Cedar Park policy. That's the direction we believe that we heard, and I think that's what our city attorney brought to us tonight.
And so Cedar Park votes?
Yes, but remember when you're, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you're changing the, we don't, we rarely do this. When you're changing the future land use plan, there's not a notification process anyway. Right, so we're not, we're not doing, the main thing that Cedar Park said was, when they present it, if it's something that you hate, really that was the, the point of it. You can just, you can tell them no right there and they can go away. If you think you're okay with it, you vote and say, you go ahead and go through the application process.
We want to see more of what you've got.
Yeah, there's no guarantee, but you go through the application process.
They can still go through the application process.
Even if we say we need it, we say no.
Oh, sure.
And then during the process, it might be that staff and them make some changes or whatever that may end up.
I'm okay with that. It's just worded a little less clear than I had anticipated. There's a legal ease in here.
That always gets in the way of things, doesn't it? So with the, yeah, the, in the, what I got from Cedar Park, it's, it's accepted, it's shown in their minutes. So they don't have a formal document. It's recorded in their minutes, which it says in here that they accept the petition. So there's an acceptance of the petition by the city council according to what they have documented in their minutes where they adopted this process. So that tells me there needed to be some kind of a vote.
Yeah, so they, they vote on accepting it.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, if you're concerned it's just that we are transparent and accountable to our constituents that already live there.
Yes, and there's no intent to dilute that in any way with this.
Or change zoning.
Right, no.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Excuse me, one question. Can the applicant choose not to have us vote on it and just present it?
There's not a, oh, choose not to have you.
That would just be a workshop, wouldn't it?
Then, yeah, I think that would just be a different process. That would be a workshop or a council-sponsored item.
Why would they do that? What would you, what are you envisioning?
Maybe they, they want to go forward with their project and they fear that a denial from us in this development proposal review would somehow taint the way.
They're not required to go through this process. So if they didn't want to vote, I would just say, don't go through this process.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Good luck figuring out who said that.
The right hand or the left hand? Okay, I'm going to recognize, who made the motion, Mr. Silas? Put the second by Pro Tem Stevenson. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sines. All right, we're going to move to number 24, receive a presentation from, I hope she's awake, Leander Chamber of Commerce President Bridget Brandt regarding receiving hotel occupancy tax, H O T funds for visitors and convention bureau. This is the discussion, item only, no action.
Thank you very much for having me. Really excited to be here, but mostly so I can do this. I've learned how to do it. Thank you, Mike New. I am here tonight to ask for all of you to approve for us to work with staff to work out an agreement for the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center to receive a portion of the hot funds that are non-existent today. I am recognizing that that does not exist today, but we do anticipate them existing in the very near future. Or not very near future, in the future, rather. It's not very near, but in the future. The reason that this has come up is in our board retreat, well, in ongoing discussions with our board and in our board retreat, our board has asked for me to come to you all to ensure that the money, the time, the effort that we are spending currently representing Leander as a visitor center is an intention that the city council has for us to pursue as we move forward. We have found that it's easier to have these discussions when there is no money than it is to have those discussions when there is money. It makes it lots easier for people to approve. But at the same time, you'll see very shortly in the slides I present that our expenses and our costs for doing this are rapidly increasing, much more rapidly increasing than we thought they were going to be increasing. So that is why we are coming to you now, because of that. So we are very comfortable continuing to pursue this work, knowing that it is out of our own pocket for the foreseeable future. That said, we want to ensure that when there are funds available, that we are the recipient of a portion of those funds. So, I have prepared two very short, simple slides for you. This is our current spend in 2018. This is the money that the chamber spent directly related to tourism in Leander. And so, there are other things that we've done that might overlap tourism. So that is not the total number. But they're getting, you're getting very particular with line items and I think this gives you a pretty good overall picture. Direct advertising in general for that means any advertising that would be related to promoting the city of Leander outside of a specific thing that we were doing. So for example, the Hill Country Passport, that was a really easy example. But there's lots of things like that, so, things like that. Tourism only are things that are related 100% directly to bringing tourists to Leander, not through an event. So, that's what that is. Staff, that is a portion of our current staff budget. I do not think that that's fully representative. I think that's an insanely conservative number. But in the spirit of getting something to you in a very rapid manner, that's my very best guess at what that might look like. And then of course, our events budget, and that is the exact number, which is interesting because it is actually 000 when the math adds up, which is very interesting. Anyway, so that is our current total. I'll show one other slide and then I'll take any questions that y'all have. The second is an estimate based on the Comptroller of Texas. And I think there's been some discussion based on y'all's workshop of how our funds might be spent were we to receive these funds. Our current anticipation of receiving these funds and spending these funds is very much in line with what everybody else in the state of Texas is doing. The majority of our budget, as you currently see today, is spent on advertising and promotion. The next highest percent is spent on visitor center, the facilities, the, that means our current office, by the way. And then also, operation of the center predominantly staffing, which you'll see in that, obviously, because of our current relationship with our current office. Historical preservation and then arts and heritage, all of which we are currently doing. In fact, we're spending more on historical preservation and arts and heritage than the Texas averages today with zero funding. In addition, I just want to point out a couple of things to you that you'll probably find interesting that you may not know today. So we officially became the visitor center in 2014. We are currently operating not only the chamber's website, but a visitor-specific website, a website for the Old Town Street Festival, a Facebook page for all of our, separate Facebook pages for all of our big events driving tourism, and Facebook pages for Visit Leander TX, which we own all of those current properties for. So you may not even know all of that's happening, but it is. We are also a part of the Texas Hill Country Trail Region for visitor centers, specifically bringing Texas, Texans to this region and people even out of state. And also members of the T, Texas Association for Convention and Visitors. And we're actively involved in that organization as well. So I felt like I should share all of that information and then now I'll ask, answer any questions that you might have.
So do we, like, do we know, like, some of the events, we spend a lot on getting people into our festivals, tourism, right? Do we know the economic impact?
We do.
Associated with those?
Typically, I report those at our, typically I report those numbers, I think I have it from one of our prior city council meetings. Typically, I report those numbers at the June meetings because that's following, like, for example, the Old Town Street Festival. Last year, hold on, let me go to it and I'll tell you.
Pretty big number.
It's a very big number. Last year, the economic impact of the Old Town Street Festival was, at a very conservative estimate, $225,000. The expo that we do in February, which is coming up, is estimated at $33,000. Those numbers are taken from the state of Texas comptroller based on people and what they spend when they are in town. Our numbers do not include hotel because today, none of them can stay here. I also know that we filled up, you'll be very interested to know this, our Old Town Street Festival filled up three Cedar Park hotels last year when we had it. Three of them.
You're welcome.
So, you're welcome, wherever I'm being video. They love us.
They're going to bill you, Corbin.
Yeah, they love us and they love our festival. So much in fact, that now we're having to buy rooms this year for our festival for the people that we need to put in rooms from Cedar Park and pay that rate. And we're only getting a very small discount because we filled all of their rooms last year, which is crazy. Anywho, I divert.
Bridget, on, on these numbers that you just gave us, is that the total sales tax collected?
No, it's based on estimates of their spending. So it's not based on sales tax collected. Now, we do have, we, we can't really get a full number of that because those vendors don't have to report that to us. So for example, we are very, very deliberate in trying to choose local vendors. So, for example, let's say you, since we're talking about Old Town Street Festival, you apply for Old Town Street or Christmas Festival, either of those festivals. This just happened. We have two barbecue places that have applied. One is Leander, one is not. Leander is always selected. So that, obviously, from the festival direct, yes, it contributes to sales tax revenue. That is a very small line item of it. The overall spending, though, you have to think about, yes, they're eating at the festival, but they stay here, they drive here, they buy gas here, they typically stay in Cedar Park, so they're spending money there. Then they eat breakfast the next morning in Cedar Park.
But do we know how many attendees don't live in Leander? Do we have any, I would assume most of the people who come to Old Town are from Leander.
I don't think that's a fair assumption. I think that you can assume that, yes, there are a lot of people that come. But we know that we have people that come, like, we had a person come from California to run our race last year. And we know that because when we track where they register from their race, we know that they did that because our course is flat and fast, so people come to run it. We can't, we don't track that per se, like, where they, no, we could track it from our race to see where they are. But yes, I would say a lot of them, absolutely, they're in Leander and they're Leander residents. That's one of the reasons we would like to receive these funds. So for example, look to our neighbors Georgetown, the Poppy Fest. The Poppy Fest started out just exactly like Old Town Street Festival started. Today, they have 100,000 people that come over that three-day weekend. And it's because they have hot funds to pay for all of the things that are happening that drive that attendance. We don't have that. We, we are paying for it. So I don't think people quite get that. Oh, why can't we have an armband? We get that question every year. Well, we can't have an armband because we have to pay for that. And the chamber doesn't have money to pay for that. That's not the way that it works. Anywhere in, anywhere, that doesn't happen. But we felt like it was, in order to be able to be here today five years ago, we needed to start that. So today now, we're talking about, we already have an insanely popular event that is one of the premier things for our vendors to do. We already have 10,000 to 15,000 people coming to it. And so if you can infuse it with the resources needed to market, we don't have money to market outside of what Facebook can do. So we Facebook market through, you know, a fairly sizable region in the state of Texas. But beyond that, we don't have the funds to do what should or could be happening. So is it all Leander people? No, it's not. But is it fair to assume that it's majority? Highly likely, yes. Would that be very easily changed with money infused into it? Absolutely.
So that's my concern. Number one is the money has to be spent putting heads in beds.
Correct.
And so, how do we make sure we're doing that? If we don't know how many out-of-city people are coming here.
Well, I can.
Well, right now, there are no beds.
Right, so it doesn't matter. But I can tell you, we have three events that are coming this spring, all of which wanted to have that hotel, and we could have filled that hotel, every single one of them. There is absolutely no debate. They're not open till September, though, so it doesn't.
We sold out three.
And we've sold out three hotels in Cedar Park, so there's no re, we would sell out our hotel. There's no debate. There's absolutely no debate. We could sell out probably four hotels, you know? So, yes, that's how you do it. That's how everybody does it in the state of Texas. So it's not just like, oh, this is Bridget's great idea. This is the way it's done.
Okay. It says here that the maximum hot rate that can be charged is up to 9%. I'm not sure how much we're planning on charging. But with those funds coming in, what's the expectation of what the chamber is going to use and maybe what the city economic development is going to use? Because I'm not sure where those funds are going to go.
Well, you can't really use hotel motel funds for economic development.
Nor can you use it for the chamber, just to be really clear.
Yeah, but I mean, it's going to be used by somebody in our city, government or the Chamber of Commerce. So how's that going to be split? Are we going to let the chamber kind of take it all to use it for bringing people in?
Are we gonna let the chamber kinda take it all to use it for bringing people in? I mean, what's that gonna look like?
I think that's what we need to work out and bring back to you. We just want, if, if you like the big picture of this, then we'll narrow it down. And just with the, I don't think we can charge 9%. It's probably 7% for us, there's some.
I agree.
There's some exceptions, and you have to have special legis, fit certain special legislation to get up to the 9%. But if we had something special we wanted to do someday, we can have our own legislation passed because a lot of cities have done that.
Right.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Kegel. Do you know, is there a reporting requirement to the state or anything, since it has to be 50% plus one for out-of-town usage? Or is it kinda the owner system?
No, I'm not for sure. They, they have, they have to report to the city, and they have to segregate the funds. They can't commingle them, but I'm, I didn't follow the part about 50% plus one.
For anything that's using the hotel tax, it has to show that the, the purpose that it's paying out to has to be, like, if we're having a convention, 50% of the people coming into a convention center plus one have to be, so that it's a majority are out-of-town.
Yes and, yes and no is the answer to that question. I think I understand your question, and yes, there is reporting. So, for example, we're not gonna use convention because there's no convention center, so that's unlikely, but let's go back to the festival. There is a reporting mechanism to the state of Texas, but currently, that's an optional reporting mechanism. So, you can, there's a form that you fill out, a post-event form that you would fill out, that we actually filled out last year for the Old Town Street Festival, even though we didn't have heads because of the economic impact of the festival regardless. Anyway, you can, you, there is a way to report it, and that's how this type of information that you see on the screen now is actually brought back to you.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So, you have a way to do that?
Yes.
Excellent.
So, so that information, it's a, it's a two-step test.
Right.
First of all, it puts heads in beds, but second, it has to fit one of those. They list nine categories, but there's really six or seven that would apply to us.
Yes.
So, it's, it's gotta meet both of those.
Right.
And if you do that, then it's a qualified expenditure for a hotel motel fund.
And it's important to think about too, just because the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center is receiving the funds, it doesn't mean that all of the funds would be used by us. So, for example, this is happening today. Today, we have a circus coming in March, we have Vintage Market Days coming in April, and we have Old Town Street Festival in May. So, we are in discussion with all of them on getting a billboard, obviously, to promote people coming into our town. Well, billboards are $3,000 for a billboard, to get a billboard for a month, and so, were there hot funds, that would be a very, that is exactly the type of use that you could do, and most people seeking, we're very lucky to have either of these two organizations coming to Leander today, and without that, but if we had that, a lot of cities will do, like, a lot of, like, for example, we would maybe have matched that, or we would pay for their billboard, so that it would be a joint partnership, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's things like that, but there has to be a test for what that looks like.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I like it.
I definitely like it, and I think we've talked in the past about how our festivals are so much better than anything around us, whether it's Liberty Fest or, you know, Old Town Fest, it's, you know, people are starting to recognize us as, they've got some really cool things going on, so.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I think we have the makings of really, I think we have the opportunity to do something really unique with some of those things, and you can just look to Georgetown, I mean, they have really nailed that. They've figured out exactly how to do it, they've got lots of hotels, there's things that are happening all the time. They're not just things that the chamber is doing either, you know? And that's something that we really need money to be able to do, you know? We can't do every single thing in Leander, it won't, it's not possible, as we are rapidly finding out. And so, it's a really good opportunity for us to grow.
I, I just wanna give you some props, because back when this discussion happened, I was on the chamber board, and I remember, you know, do we wanna go down this road? And I, I applaud your foresight in having that discussion before we even had a twinkle in our little eye about a hotel coming to Leander. So, now that that is in the works, I'm excited to see it bear fruit for you.
Thank you. Me too.
I had one more question. In your proposal that you're gonna come back, is, is this going to be renewed every three years, five years, or?
That's something that we're asking to negotiate. Our intention, we would like to have a five-year negotiation, just because of the amount of money that we have put forth and the amount of planning that is required for it to be successful. But yes, it would be something, and also, there are a lot of requirements, I won't talk too long on it, but it's a lot of requirements that have to be met, so no commingling of funds, so there won't be, you know, there aren't, none of that happens. In the reports that I give you all, you'll see that. We, we'll track visitor, like, all of that stuff, there's a lot of things that are required for that to actually be successful. Some of the things you're seeing today, that we're doing now is a kinda precursor to having those funds, but there is additional reporting that's required as a part of that, so you'll, you would definitely see that.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and you have done such a marvelous job for the city of Leander, and I'm looking forward to voting on this. We can continue in the future.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Bridgette, while you're here, when is the next, oh, there it is, April 2nd, okay.
April 2nd is, so I'll give you all a quick rundown. So, the circus tickets actually went on sale today. We have tickets for sale, so yes, I was gonna bring you a flyer and I left it on my desk. Anyway, tickets for the circus went on sale today, it is the, oh, I don't have my calendar, but it's the March, the weekend before spring break, so that Friday, Saturday, Sunday before spring break, then immediately following the circus will be April 2nd, which will be the Taste, the Artful Flavors of Leander, which will be a tasting reception in Old Town, along with art, an art component. We don't know if it's an art auction yet, or if it is an art show, the Public Arts Council is working on that. And then there will be an elected officials reception there, so we are very excited about that. Councilmember Seidler's brought that to us as an opportunity for us to bring elected officials from all over the county together, and we love that idea. So, we'll be doing that, that evening as well. And then following that will be, the next weekend is Vintage Market Days, and so they are very much in the planning processes, and so that's really exciting, so I hope you'll all attend that. And then, May 18th is the Old Town Street Festival. So, this spring, there are lots of fun things to do in Leander, so for everybody that says there's nothing to do in Leander, they need to get out this spring, and that isn't even, including all of the amazing wonderful things that Mark's team's working on. So, it's gonna be, Bluegrass is coming up, Kite Festival, so there, so there are so many things, so none of that even begins to touch all of the opportunities that there are. So, a lot of those are outlined in our new guide to Leander, so, including the parks, so be sure and grab one of those for everybody watching this.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Great presentation. All right, we move to number 25. Discuss and consider action on task order BBI-3 with Binkley and Barfield for professional services for W-South, West South Street at Southwest Street Intersection Improvements Project in the amount of $87,221, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents and providing an effective date. Mr. Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal that's attached in your packet is gonna be reformatted into that task order BBI-3 and provides for the design, bidding, construction phase services for the improvements to this intersection out here that we love so much. The intersection of West South Street and Southwest Drive, and, you know, the scope of services is attached. It's a lump sum project all the way through, from design through construction, as the mayor noted, it's $87,221. Staff requests authorization of city manager to negotiate, execute task order BBI-3. Answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion?
I, I just wanna point out that this was a voter-approved bond project.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm very curious to see how it's going to look after construction, after engineering.
I think circles are pretty.
It's gonna be, at this point, we anticipate it being an elliptical roundabout.
Which is just more than my lips, I can, yeah, it's gonna be nice.
Not a divergent, I hope.
No. And Mike notes that Binkley and Barfield have probably the top roundabout consultant in the country on this team.
Well, can I motion to approve?
I'll second. I stay away from elliptical balls anyway, so I'll be okay. All right, we have a, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Setifas.
I, I just had a question on page four of what was submitted, all the assumptions, the no right-of-way easement acquisition, no relocation of water, wastewater. Is that standard?
That's not include, that's not included in this contract. Once we identify what properties that we need, we'll have a separate acquisition process. I'm expecting that we're gonna acquire some of the church's parking lot, part of that negotiation is sure going to be how are we gonna replace that parking for them, so.
Okay, so the, these, you know, assumptions of this doesn't mean that that's the final condition?
Doesn't mean that it's not gonna happen. Just means it's not part of their contract duties in this contract.
Thank you.
Not included in this price.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to approve our pro temp Stevenson with the second by Mr. Seidler. Is there any other discussion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were the second, by Councilmember Navarrete. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? This is unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Thank you.
All right. Item 26, discuss and consider action on the adoption of a policy for social media participation by council members. Mr. New.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mike New, Public Information Officer. I guess I wanted to start by giving you a little background. You know, this request came, started from some brainstorms that came from the retreat last July, discussed again at a second retreat, and then discussed a little bit more about a month ago, so, a little bit of background, I had done some research on just, you know, how prevalent is social media, we kinda know that, but just to share with the public, pure research data shows, obviously, many, many social media channels are becoming not only important tools, but essential tools for communication, so crafting some standards and expectations from public engagement are important, and bringing those forward to you today. We started as our, our baseline, some elements of focus provided by Texas Municipal League. They included acceptable use standards, account management, citizen conduct, employee access, employee conduct, legal issues, content management, and security. Now, by charter, we're supposed to bring forward personnel policies for your review and approval. In doing so, bringing forward a staff policy, we decided that, considering these elements of focus, there were certain elements that council had more focus on and other elements that were more prevalent to staff, and so in doing that, that was kind of our justification for bringing forward two separate policies. And on the screen, we kinda separated those. If you'll look through some of the subject matter, it includes some guidelines, but also some, especially for the council policy, we're addressing some legal implications of standards of conduct and how content is managed from individual council members. And then on the staff side, just how employees access social media, the, the, kinda the rules for creating social media accounts, and then presenting the public in both policies with sort of the rules for engagement on content that's shared or discussed or put forward. One, I'll make one note here, housekeeping item. We did make one change that doesn't appear in the public packet, but we noticed that the definition for employee under the employee policy at the very end also included council members and appointed members, so we struck that, and that would be the motion, if it was a motion to approve, that you would approve based on tonight's discussion. So, that would strike that last part from the employee definition. So, I'll take any questions you might have, but I did wanna share this with you. So, next steps, if these policies were approved tonight, the staff policy, we would add it to the ethics section of the personnel policy, we would add policy statements to city-owned accounts, and also put this policy out on our website for the public to view, and then incorporate some additional training for staff, so that they're aware of the policy and they can abide by its tenants. And then for the council policy, your, if you were to approve the proposal as stated, it would essentially be an adoption by resolution, that's pretty standard per our charter, and then policy statements would be added. We would include some policy statements for you to, to look at, consider adding to your accounts, and we would post this policy on the city website as well, and provide optional training if you wanted. And I'll take any questions.
So, if we adopted, if we said to go ahead with the council policy, then we come up with the policy statements, is, and that's a separate vote to approve those?
No, those, that would be more of a process, so those, those statements, and I'll give you an example. One example is under, under use of personal accounts under 1B, we gave you an example statement of clarifying what the nature of the content in those personal accounts would be. So, that would simply be a statement you put in the about section of, say, your Facebook page, or in the profile section of a Twitter account. So, we give you, we provide you examples of those statements that you can include to clarify.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve based on his additions in the line that he struck tonight.
My second. I still have a question.
Okay.
They're two separate, but one for the council and one for the, for the council. Yes, the change was to the employee side, so the council, there wasn't any changes to it.
Okay, so, a motion to approve the council's portion of the policy.
My second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete with the second, second by Councilmember Shepherd.
My question is for the staff section, so, do you want me to ask that now, or?
Uh, no, let's wait till. Any more discussion on the council part of it?
Social media is always changing. I'm dismayed to see that so far, there hasn't been anything brought up in the Texas Legislature about where the line is on what elected officials can and cannot say. I'm hoping that something will happen during this session, and this is something that's covered a lot at TML, at a lot of their trainings, because of the constantly evolving nature, and it's sort of just being decided by individual courts right now. How often are you looking to, well, and then, okay, so then, stacked on top of that, that Facebook changes like every six months, right? How are you planning on, on keeping up with all of that and amending the policy every time there's a change or a court ruling, or?
Well, that, that was one of the, the reasons for bringing two policies to you. I think, you know, definitely the, and I'll go back, the legal implications, the legal issues were much more of a focus for elected officials. It's, it's pretty cut dry for staff, for any employee of a municipal organization, we, we pretty much know what those rules are and what we have to follow. Elected officials, it's a little bit different. You have more flexibility to provide opinions, to engage the public directly, but again, knowing about the Open Meetings Act, Public Information Act, there are lines that can be crossed, and in, in a lot of cases, in social media, it's become very subjective in how someone determines when those lines are crossed. So, a lot of the policy that we presented to you are simply considerations. We can't draw those black and white lines, those aren't decided by us, but we'll keep looking at it, and if there are significant changes, like Facebook, maybe they completely changed their whole business model and completely changed the nature of engagement and how they do those things. If those have implications from a legal perspective, and of course, Roxy Stevens has been very essential in helping us sort of draw these lines, then we'll bring that back to you.
Okay. And, and I really appreciate all the work you guys have done on this, and I think that, you know, the guidelines are beautiful. I hate the idea, though, of, i- i- it's essentially saying be civil on a lot of it, and I hate that we are.
Necessary.
Yes. I don't wanna codify be civil to people, you know? For anybody, I mean, everybody, you know?
But you need to.
The nature of our world, unfortunately.
Mr. Seidler.
So, this is something that we talked about during the retreat, that use of official accounts, and then item four, campaign separately. Can you help, help me flesh that out a little bit?
Yes, we, we wanted to be a little bit clearer on that, because, you know, we're putting forward this separate policy, because at this time, council members, the city does not own, manage, or otherwise, otherwise fund or operate council member accounts. So, council members are wholly responsible for their content, they manage their content. I say they, elected officials, you sitting up here, manage your content without any Um, yes, we, we wanted to be a little bit clearer on that because, um, you know, we're putting forward this separate policy because, uh, at this time, council members, uh, the city does not own, manage, or otherwise, otherwise fund or operate council member accounts, so council members are wholly responsible for their content, they manage their content, I say they, elected officials, you sitting up here, um, manage your content without any, um, direct staff involvement in that. Um, that removes you from, um, yeah, Roxy, step in if I'm stepping on my toes here, but that removes you from some of the legal issues that are created when, um, when you're engaging with the public, so, um, that does give you a little bit more freedom, but we wanted to be clear here that if you are commenting on a city-owned account, that if you're, if you're in any way associating with city-owned accounts or city, um, sponsored engagement through a city page, uh, that you leave the electionary and the campaigning out of that.
But on our personal.
Yes, on the personal page.
One more, one more thing on that, 'cause I know that the election, or the campaign.
Could you get to the microphone?
The campaign accounts were a question, um, you are allowed to do that, just please be aware, as the, uh, guidelines in the city council policy say, it may be subject to either First Amendment rights of commenters and/or the Public Information Act, just depending on the nature of the facts at issue at that time. There's no blanket answer to that, so that's why we wrote the city council, uh, policies and guidelines in such a general manner that allows the evolvement, uh, of the law as it, as it comes to us. So there's not gonna be a lot of change, this is such a glob, this is kind of a global map to help you as the council navigate what social media is and how it's evolving, and we've even put in there a catchall that says this does not bypass any of the laws that may apply.
Right.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, sorry. So, I, I do feel that that, um, I mean, this is public, it's public right now, I, and I feel like if we pass this, that that broadness does open the door for, uh, you know, because not everybody loves each one of us, right? I feel like we're opening the door and handing, I know, right, uh, handing a great big stick to people that don't like us to beat us with, whenever there's a change in anything, immediately, well, you're not following the policy, it's right here in writing, you know, because it's sort of vague, does that? You've probably never been hated on, on social media as hard as we have.
I've actually experienced it.
So, so, um, i- it's gonna happen with or without the policies. They're gonna wave around an attorney general opinion that talks about maybe a, a Public Information Act issue that doesn't address the First Amendment right and say this, this guarantees my First Amendment right, so, um, I don't think it's gonna be, it, it shouldn't, and it's not meant to be a, a tool to attack or anything, it's meant to provide guidelines and to just provide a roadmap, um, for everyone to understand this is, this is, you know, the social media world that we're living in now, the legalities that we have to consider, and, um, since we're, you know, y'all are elected officials, um, what is expected, uh, of the council?
So then I don't understand why this doesn't come to us in an informal guideline instead of an official adopted policy.
I think it was requested to be a policy, isn't that what you?
I never requested it.
I, I did, I have.
It, it, from, from our understanding, it did come forward as a request for a policy.
Absolutely.
And since staff, I mean, there are internal departments that have their own policies for social media use, but it, we felt it prudent to bring forward these policies and have one that covers the entire organization as it operates, and then one for council, so that's, that's where it came from.
So, one of my questions that was asked earlier, and I'm, I don't see where it's addressed, can my official Facebook account be a member of a closed group?
You're talking about?
Your council person?
My.
That's a page, you can't be in a group as a page.
No, you can't, like.
Okay, so then.
See the constantly evolving nature of social media.
Let me preface by these specific questions, li- like I said earlier, there's no blanking, blanket answer that, uh, we can provide to you saying yes or no, uh, we would have to, you would have to, for us to, to be able to properly analyze it, uh, provide us with the page, what the content is, et cetera, we'd have to see if there's any specific law as it's evolving around, I mean, there's a case going on right now in Hawaii, there's cases up in the northeast, um, see if, if that particular issue has been litigated or is currently under a court review.
That's a rabbit hole, you don't wanna go down.
Shepherd, did you want something?
Well, when Councilman Seiler asked about, um, campaigning, I just wanna make sure that we got clarification, so if you're an incumbent and you have a social media page as an office holder, you have to create a separate account during a campaign, you can't use one for the other.
No, the language has changed here.
That's what I wanna, but it's not this. Verbal, proactive, right?
Right, I, I think there was maybe an understanding from some earlier drafts that the, the instance of this campaign separately section of the policy would prevent a council member from using his or her current page to, you know, do some campaigning and, and provide some campaign-related messages, this, uh, this would not prevent that person from doing that within those boundaries of that account, but it's, it's inserted into this policy to, um, to inform you that by, if you're putting campaign messages and linking those to city-owned accounts, that might create an issue.
Right.
Okay, well, that's good.
So I can't post vote for me on their city Facebook page?
No, we would not.
But you would never do any.
We would monitor that very heavily, yes.
Right.
But you could, no, I'm just, I'm not even gonna.
Are you losing a?
I'm not.
And really, you know, there are, there are, uh, unlimited number of very specific scenarios and examples, we do put in, in, in the council policy, many, many, in several instances, consult with legal, if you're, if you have any real doubts about this being an issue, consult with legal, we will handle those on a case, they will handle those on a case-by-case basis, but it's all about setting expectations with the public, what, how can the public expect to best engage with you using social media, that's really why these policies exist.
I think it's helpful.
I have a question along those lines, and that is, so, something that you want to have available for the public to use you, you know, to, to reach you in an official capacity, correct, um, is it appropriate just to use, you know, your official city email, or an official city phone number that they could leave messages, is it necessary to have a social media, um, content, or that's?
Contact.
An official social media, so in other words, I think the blur sometimes is, we've got these private, you know, things, and, you know, we may talk about what we're doing as a, a mayor or a council person, but then we give the, the citizens and residents an opportunity through a phone number to reach us, through an email to reach us, you know, so is there a distinction that, could somebody say, well, I can't reach you via a Facebook account, you see what I mean? Does that make any sense?
Well, the, you know, again, as far as legal implications, I can't speak to those, but, uh, we, you know, the statements that we provide saying, if, if you wanna engage with an individual, say, they reach out to you on social media because that's their channel for reaching out to you, but you would prefer a different form of communication, that redirect to an email or that redirect to a phone number is certainly applicable, so there's no, that I know of, there's no mandate requiring council persons to participate like many others do on a daily basis on social media. If that's not your best way of, of engaging the public, then certainly you're not required to do that, but providing those, providing that redirection to an avenue where someone can communicate with you, that's really what we're trying to do with this.
So you're saying you teach me how to do Twitter if I decide that was necessary?
Oh, if you want to, I can teach you, but that may be dangerous.
No, thank you.
Amen.
Uh, Mr. Seiler.
So, using a personal account, so, say we approve a new gold depository, and we make a post on our personal account, hey, what did we just did in the year, am I reading that, we shouldn't do that because of new policy?
No.
What we make the post will lead to your official duties or government bodies?
I, I think, I wouldn't draw such hard lines on that, um, you know, you're still an individual, you can still yay or nay things, you know, show your support for various things going on in the community, it's, it's having that dialogue about, um, in your official capacity as a, as a council member, if someone reaches out to you and wants to have that dialogue and engagement, that would be an opportunity for you to redirect to an official account and, and to put it in that form, so that the public knows that's where those discussions are had, because not all, the public does not have access to your personal Facebook account, that's what you're using.
Unless it's a public, unless the privacy is.
Unless you allow that, but you're allowed to restrict, you know, your private page, as long as you make it clear that's your private.
For instance.
But you could do specific posts.
I need to add, when you start, um, when content on your personal account, there's no prohibition if you're talking about something that you passed or, or an agenda item, et cetera, but just be aware, there may be implications legally regarding the First Amendment, um, on comments or engagement with, with whoever's commenting, and Public Information Act, possibly retention, um, and, and other, other legal things like that, so.
I have a question on that note, can I ask it real quick, because of something she just said, so, but if you're talking about something that's already happened, you're not trying to influence opinion, correct? I mean, you're just giving, okay, we, we gather today.
Like you're giving an update, is that what you're saying?
You're giving an update, um, whatever, but you're not trying to influence future action by citizens, or council, or the city, anything like that. Do you see the difference? I mean, I guess that's not restricted, right?
So we're not. The content on what you post on your own personal account, is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
That, that's not restricted, just be aware that it had, there may be some legal implications to that that may subject it to the Public Information Act, may make it a public forum rather than your personal page, and that, that's what, that's the thing that needs to look, be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
So for example, if, if we said something on our personal page about a, a new project going on in town, and somebody made an open records request for any and all discussions regarding Project A.
Right, we would.
We would then have to submit our conversations on.
You would have to submit that, and if we were seeking some sort of applicable exception, it would have to be submitted to the attorney general who would make a ruling just on the Public Information Act law alone, not any, there could also be some sort of First Amendment deal, um, which would be filed separately in a federal court.
But we would have to at least submit our private post to.
Submit to the attorneys and to the attorney general, to, so they can make a ruling, yes.
That's what she's saying, is be aware.
Or Tim Stevenson.
Yeah, so, so another example would also be, um, on Facebook, there's neighborhood pages, and there's conversations going on sometimes, and sometimes they talk about what the city did, so in essence, to answer that, we would say, um, you know, some, every once in a while, you get tagged.
Without, without wanting to be tagged.
Yeah, without wanting to be tagged, and so we would just pop in, 'cause it would be our personal pages, and we would pop in and say, hey, I can discuss this, but either private message or go on to, or go on to my other official.
Email.
City council, or email me.
Exactly.
So that's what we would have to do, so instead of discussing it in the open like that.
I've experienced that lately with a neighborhood specific, and in fact, I've shared some of that correspondence with you guys through DARA.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
You know, they have an issue in their neighborhood, and they'll, they'll, they know I'm on their page, and that's why I'm on their page, frankly, so that we can be interactive with our residents, and they'll ask a question about something, and I'll just responded with, please forward that to me at this address, they'll email me, I'll respond, and then that same person will go back and post the, the responsive email, so it's a little bit longer way to get the information out there, but I think it still stays, I think we're following the rules.
I was gonna ask something, it, our, our hope is that this, these policies don't, um, create a chilling effect for you in engaging with the public, but we want to be able to provide you with tools to redirect messages, if you feel they're applicable to the general public, to the leander public, and not just a specific neighborhood, or one individual, we're giving you options to, that, based on our research and based on, um, some legal histories, some recent legal history, that would be most effective in letting you do that, so if you're redirecting to an email or redirecting to an official account, that means those avenues are accessible by the public more so than your private channels, so, um, you know really what's applicable to broadly Leander and sharing your opinions on policy issues.
And so, and we do appreciate this guidance.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm any clearer, by the way, uh, because you talked about earlier that it, you know, the, the restrictions were on a city-owned account, and now you're talking about restrictions on a private account.
Um.
Or city-owned.
That's the staff.
Okay.
And he's not talking about restrictions, he's talking about warnings, correct? You could be open.
One, one thing we can do a- as staff is, you know, however you decide on, on, on these policies tonight, um, we can provide you with some training related to very specific instances, or conversations, or scenarios in your engagement on social media, maybe you've, you're already thinking of a few that you've had in the past, how does this policy apply to that, how does, what are the legal implications to that? We can't, um, sort of think of every scenario that might happen, but we can certainly look at, in those very specific instances, how it applies to the policies.
I guess my question was, if, if Councilmember Shepherd, you know, comments in a homeowners association about, hey, I heard there's a, um, you know, a flood warning tonight, and she comments on that, um, no, there's not, or yes, there is, I don't know that I see the problem with that.
The policy, the policy as it stands here for council right now does not prohibit that.
Okay.
All it does is provide you guidance with, hey, keep this in mind, keep the legal implications that may be in mind, because in that aspect, if for some reason there's a number of council members on that particular forum, uh, you may have to consider the Open Meetings Act laws, um, so just keep that in mind, and if you're ever in doubt, the easiest thing is to just redirect and have that conversation through your, um, either, you know, if it's a personal conversation, personal conversation through your personal methods or emails, or if it's official, um, through your official email or contact info, I mean, it's the same thing that you would do on your personal page when you're saying something about, for instance, an agenda item, or commenting on something that you did, or saying, or ask, answering a question. The only prohibition, um, that I recall, that, you know, I've read, I've read through it and, and staying here, is that you cannot use a city-funded or city-managed social media, um, vehicle in order to campaign.
Okay.
Okay?
And if anybody violates this policy, what happens?
So, policy.
Pretty much, that's about it.
The policy is not meant to circumvent or bypass any other processes, laws, or, um, procedures that are in place, that is up to the council, uh, but it may, you know, there, there are other, um, processes and procedures that affect the council that may be implicated, uh, depends again on a case-by-case basis, and I apologize that I can't give you, I wish I could give you a blanket answer, but, um, then I'd be out of a job.
No worries. I'm just gonna, gonna reiterate that I think this would be better as guidance, that perhaps those who understand more about social media opposed to those who don't, um, could give us on a recurring basis as things change.
It will be.
It could be an updated document, but I think because there's no, like, if you do this, then X shall happen, this is kind of a self-policing policy, and just to give us parameters to.
Sure.
But then every time there's a change, it has to come in front of us and have this discussion again, where we debate the difference between a, a personal account and a page, and have to explain it again, so I, I would prefer just getting, you know, updated guidance as things are thought of or noticed or whatever, that's sort of more informal, because it's not like we can enforce this anyway.
So you think maybe just like revisit it once a year, just have it come up?
Uh, probably more often than that, just like a nice memo from, I'm sure, Mike, you're, I'm sorry, Mr. New, um, you're up to date whenever there's a change in anything.
Sure, a- and maybe in appropriate format, could be the optional training that we presented, um, as an option, or it could be part of a, a weekly update that you're getting, if there's significant changes that could impact your platform, whatever your chosen platform is, um, then that could be our, our way of communicating that to you.
Sure, court rulings, things like that.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor? Okay. I know, oh, I'm sorry, all opposed?
She raised it really high.
All right, passes, uh, six to one. All right, now we go to the, um, the second part of it, with staff policy. All right, now we go to the, the second part of it with staff policy.
It's a lot.
Is there any more discussion on this? All right? I'm sorry, Councilmember Setteckless.
Does staff currently have a policy of some sort?
So, our police and fire departments have internal department policies regarding social media use. For particular various purposes, they have social media policy internally. Other departments don't have a policy in writing that covers very specifically the way this policy does, social media use and management of accounts. So, this would be an umbrella policy. It's not any more restrictive than what currently exists with police and fire, but this, this covers every city employee and social media use.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to approve based on.
Hang on one second. She had her hand raised.
I still have a question. So, in regards to the city's social media policy, this is pretty standard for cities to have, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are city employees allowed to post opinions about candidates or current council members?
So, just by way of being a city employee, a city employee does not waive their First Amendment rights for their personal accounts. Now, there are some instances where, again, on a case-by-case basis, it may come under an exception that's provided under the First Amendment for public employees where if it has something to do with the duties of their job, it doesn't come under First Amendment. But again, it doesn't strip them of their First Amendment rights on their personal page. So, what, what we talk about here is the administration of, and the content that employees put on city-owned and city-administered websites. And we do give them a, I believe that we give them a disclaimer to put on their personal page saying, this is my opinion and not that of the city of Leander, especially if they say I'm an employee, you know, when it lists your job, et cetera.
Right. That's my concern is it says, you know, John Smith, Director of Leander Parties, I don't know, whatever. And then they post something, this particular council member is blah, blah, blah.
Now, again, the social media policies are not meant to bypass or take the place or circumvent any other policies such as professional behavior, ethical behavior, harassment, retaliation, disparate treatment, et cetera, that are already in place and are, and are also the law. So, that does not, this doesn't erase any of that. All that still applies. The social media policy is actually used in conjunction with those policies and it just provides a clearer picture and puts the employee on notice of what is expected of them by the city and their, and their supervisors.
Are there any consequences for a city employee for violating this?
Yes, there's a, there's corrective action, which is disciplinary action up, up to and including termination.
Okay.
And that's one of the other reasons that it's separate, yes.
Would there be any prohibition for, let's say, I'm a Leander dog catcher and I want to say, Leander Dogcatchers want Bob Smith or somebody like that to be elected to mayor or city council. Does this prohibit them because their title policy, their title of their job is Leander Dog Catcher, right?
So.
So, they use that in the campaign literature?
So, again, there are, as I understand, other policies that prohibit using your position in order to, but using your position in order to forward political agendas or beliefs or participate in political activity. That, of course, we have to go through the process that city of Leander already has in place. We go through the HR department, have to be investigated. All the, the facts would have to be investigated and, again, analyzed on a case-by-case basis. And it could possibly be not only violative of the social media policy, but also the other policies with regard to the engagement of an employee in political activity and other professional, any other professional or, for instance, policies that would say, give misleading statements, et cetera.
So, if I say, I'm in the Leander Dogcatchers Tuesday Night Group and our group endorses Bob Smith, that, in my opinion, should be a violation because they use their official title of Leander Dog Catcher in the campaign, if you will. Is that true?
Again, again, it would have to go through the investigative process. The facts would have to be investigated and established and, and it would possibly, it could possibly be a violation of the social media policy and other policies that apply to the personnel. So, I can't give you the answer because I don't know, I don't know all the facts in that scenario. We can think of a lot of different scenarios, but ultimately, it's going to have to go through the process and this, and we will do our due diligence. They have their due process through the process in the policies. And, and at that point, then, a determination will be made by, by whoever makes it in HR or the director, whoever's the one that has that authority. I can't stand up here and say, yes, it's a violation and then, you know, because I, I'm not the process. The HR process is the one that it has to go through.
It should be.
But I think that's, I think that's a valid question that if you're posting with your city title from whatever account, you know, Marcy Lieutenant Police Officer Marcy Cannon for Leander, you should not be able to get involved in any campaign discussion.
It should be a violation if, if Jim Bob wants to say, hey, Jim Bob is for Bob Smith. Okay? No problem. But Jim Bob shouldn't say, I'm Jim Bob, I'm part of the Leander Dogcatchers Tuesday Night Group and we support Bob Smith. Do you see what I mean?
Is it a city group or is that a?
I'm just saying, they're using their title.
A city employee.
As a way to give them credibility.
Right.
With people. And I do not believe that that should be allowed to do.
I think where you guys are getting into the weeds a little bit is groups that are not specific to the city. I mean, I feel like, I'm just gonna call it what it is, when you have firemen that are part of an organization outside their job, whether it's Political Action Committee or another professional organization that is not directly tied to the city, you're asking, are they using their position? Is that where you're going?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I feel like it's easier if you're gonna ask the question of the attorney to just use the facts in question.
Well, I don't want to limit it to them and, but.
But it's very specific.
If, if the Leander Fireman's Pack wants to say, we're the Fireman's Pack. Okay, awesome. You're a fireman, you're part of a pack, we respect you, we respect what you do. I have no problem with that. If you want to say, I'm the Leander Fireman's Pack and we endorse blah, 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 I think that's a distinction we shouldn't have.
At Austin, like City of Austin, they're like Leander, oh, they're City of Austin Police Association and things like that. Are they ever found in violation of anything?
I see.
Because that's very common during elections.
They endorse candidates.
They endorse candidates.
Your personnel policy addresses political activity that's prohibited. So, if there's political activity that's taking place that is not proper, you're, on whatever forum, your personnel policy will address that. But there are also laws that protect political activity depending on how it's done. And so, your existing personnel policy drafts rules that are in compliance with those limitations. So, I couldn't answer the specific question about whether the activity you're describing is allowed or not without looking at the law, but I can tell you, you've got a policy here existing that addresses political activity.
Okay.
Okay. And just to add to your question about, for instance, Public Safety Association's PAC, I actually have a lot of experience with them. They campaign, campaign or do their, they put their issues out there as an association or that particular PAC. They don't wear uniforms, they have their union shirts, they have, you know, et cetera. So, there's certain rules that they follow that keep them from violating policies and the laws. They're certain, they're allowed to do that as long as they do it correctly. I mean, if, if they're out there in a uniform, then that's obviously a violation that would have to be investigated. And then if, if found a violation, it would be addressed. And the same thing with the question that the mayor is asking, if this, if somebody's posting on their personal page a picture of them wearing a city work shirt, then that's most likely a violation. But again, it has to go through the process. We can't, we can't make that predetermination. It has to go through the process. The facts have to be found, investigated and established. And then a proper analysis would have to be made and, and, and see what, apply it to the policy, see whether it's a violation or not.
Okay.
I hope I answered all the questions. There were kind of a couple of them surely.
I think they have a protection under.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm going next, do it. I don't want you to forget your thing.
Well, I'm just saying, I feel like there's a fine line between restricting what somebody can do in their professional capacity and what they do as a profession. They're different categories.
And that's why we have the law and that's why it's a gray line and that's why we have, it has to be analyzed on a case-by-case basis and that's why it winds up in court with the federal court having to look at it as well, saying, you know, we're, we did, we did this disciplinary action, but they're gonna claim, well, you violated our First Amendment rights. So, it's, we have to look and there has to be research done to see if, if that particular issue has been before the courts before, if it's being litigated, if there's any kind of treatise on it, et cetera, to give us direction. So, that's, that's, that's what I can give you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one, when I read through the purpose, it reads to me like this has nothing to do with people's personal accounts unless they're purporting their personal account to be a part of the city, correct? These are just city-run accounts that we're talking about or spoofs of city-run accounts.
Yes, no. For the most part, the policy addresses how city-owned accounts are managed and how content is managed and dialogue is managed with the public.
Okay.
But we didn't want to leave personal accounts out of that because there could be implications where that content and content shared via personal accounts could affect this policy.
So, the only mention I see of personal accounts is under three. Three A, you are not permitted to create a social media page representing the city or one of its department's affiliates, et cetera. And three B, link social contact, oh, sorry, link city contact information to a personal social media account unless authorized. I'm wondering how that works with LinkedIn? Because I know that's, that's sort of the point of LinkedIn is to say, this is my job, this is what I do and this is where I work. And then other than that, other than those few cases, I don't see where any of this states that it's applied to personal accounts.
Well, if you, on two D and two E, the subject to corrective action for violating city policies and procedures, that's kind of what Roxy was talking about a little while ago. There could be instances where someone may be misrepresenting the city or may be purporting themselves or purporting a message that is representative of the city or misleading in representing the city that, from a personal account, that still may have impact on this policy.
Okay. But would they not already face something for that?
Yes, so, so it would violate another policy, but it's also mentioned here as being inclusive. So, we didn't want to totally abdicate personal accounts because those, those can be related to this policy as well.
Okay. And as for two B, how it, how that would work with LinkedIn, my reading of it is that it would just make everybody who wants a LinkedIn account have to get permission from the city manager.
Well, no, I don't think we're, I don't think this, and I hope it doesn't read that we're telling employees from their personal accounts not to include their work history at the City of Leander as part of their profile. I don't think that this policy prohibits them from doing that. Now, the nature of engagement on LinkedIn is, of course, based on profession and career. So, I don't think this policy necessarily conflicts with that. Now, that, that was sort of the intent of drafting is that it does cover all social media channels. So, procedurally, we could address that with staff and how that might apply to this policy specifically.
Okay. I think this is another one of those things where I don't want to, you know, codify what people can do with their personal accounts. I would rather just, you know, a memo go out and says, you know, be civil, be nice, don't tear down the city. If you want to advocate for somebody, that's great. You don't have to tear the other person down. It just, it makes us all look bad.
Sure. We, we didn't want to say too little or say too much, so it's definitely a balance.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cannon.
I appreciate that the city needs one of these. We've seen in the past we need it. I think it's only healthy to have it in there and not just assume that everyone's gonna do it. But the imagery that one of you just gave, that if someone's wearing a city logo and they're doing a video slamming how, you know, something in the city is run, not you, something in the, you know, to me, that is the same as having my name, you know, Battalion Chief, Leander Battalion Chief, Assistant Chief, whatever, and then I'm making a comment about how Leander water rates suck or something like that. So, to me, it's the same thing. My, my hope is that city employees using city titles won't disparage the city publicly and won't disparage and get involved in the political campaigning.
But should those employees face disciplinary action for posting just a picture of themselves smiling at the park in their uniform?
That's, that's not disparaging a city, another city employee or department. That's.
Well, we do have guidelines about campaign-type events with, in your uniform or with, you know, City of Leander insignia or things like that. So, we already have those, you know?
So, what I'm hearing from you, from you is that we're somehow limiting an employee's personal account. And I don't think that this, this, the employee's social media policies do not do that. What it does do, it, in fact, specifically says, this policy does not extend to the personal social media accounts managed by you, but be aware and be placed on notice that you may be subject to corrective action for violating any of the other city, city policies, which include professionalism, ethics, political activity, et cetera. And we even put here, by publishing content that can negatively affect the public confidence in either the city operations or your capacity to serve as an employee. So, it puts them on notice.
And I don't have a problem with anyone's First Amendment rights. If they're going to make a negative comment about anything, I only have a problem when right under their name has their City of Leander XYZ title on it. That's, that's where I have a problem. So, as, as long as that's being addressed, then that's, and we understand this is an evolving, living document. It will need to be updated, but at least we're putting a stake in the ground.
And this is simply another lens which those instances could be evaluated. Okay, so can I get a motion on this?
You have one and a second.
Who is the second? I didn't catch.
Who was the second?
I'll be it.
I don't even remember.
A motion by Councilmember Never Ready and a second by Councilmember Sack.
With, with the.
With.
With the third act, yes, okay.
All right, all in favor? All right, passes you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And those opposed? All right, passes six to one.
Thank you both for all the work and Ms. Sines, you've been working on this too.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay. Twenty seven. Discuss garage standards, including repealing both alley garage requirements and garage setbacks to the livable area. This is a discussion item only, no action. I would like to get some clear guidelines for staff. Ms. Griffith, do you mind? Okay. So talking about what we talked about in the workshop and the, the viewpoint that, you know, maybe mandating the alleys isn't maybe the, the best thing, but having them as an option. With the understanding that maybe we can work with HBA and come up with some enhancements to the front facing garages. Are you okay with that direction?
So are you looking for us to prepare an ordinance to bring before the commission and council?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is just for the, so right now the alleys only apply to SFL, SFT and cottage housing. So would it just be those zoning districts?
What about townhomes?
That's SFT, single family townhouse.
Okay. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. So yes.
Okay.
Again, somebody could, you know, somebody could still build, you know, a, a project with alley loaded product. That's an op, that's an option that people are, are able to do, you know? So as long as we can make that clear.
So it's not a prohibition?
Absolutely.
So, and I'm wondering, because the whole reason this came up is because of the, the neighborhood, you know, snout nose look that just looked like little boxes kind of poking out. So I'm wondering if, if there's some way, especially some of these narrow lots, I'm not sure how you're going to do it other than having a big garage out front. But is there some way that it can be written so that there's a little bit more than just a big square box with a, a roll up door in the front of it?
Maybe, would it be better if we set up a meeting with HBA and the commission and everyone to talk about ideas? I think they were going to come up with stuff.
Because I want to give you a little more guidance than just, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be nice because they're the ones in.
Honestly, I think that ought to be a council. I think that should be a council.
Then why don't we have a work session with them?
With who?
With the.
HBA.
We offer.
Well, no, no. I'm talking P and Z and HBA. I think it ought to be a council.
All three?
No.
Sure.
Council and HBA. My comment was the examples we saw today for the forty five foot lots. Does anyone here have a problem with the way those look?
The ones that.
That we were, that we saw today.
The presentation.
The presentation today.
We all said we liked them.
For the forty five foot lot.
Are you talking about from the development?
Those are for forty five foot lots.
I'm talking about the design, not a zoning issue. I'm just saying.
I, I would, my reluctance to answer that question is I don't want to stifle the creativity. And I'm afraid if we say, yeah, that's fine, then we aren't going to get some creative suggestions.
And so the request is to work with HBA and David can research and, and find some great examples and then maybe council review them.
Just because it's what everybody else does, doesn't mean it's the best idea.
And then council can review it and then give direction to staff on how to amend the ordinances.
Well, I think the, the whole intent of the quote unquote snout nose was to give people more options with floor plans, correct?
That and the, the streetscape.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, if you limit that, you're limiting home buyers from, you know, making this, a decision that, you know, I kind of like the, the floor plan of this versus, you know, restricting. I, I don't know how, you know, you can adjust how far back from the street it is, correct?
Okay. Well, but what we've just asked for is going to address all that. So it's late. Can we just task this and?
Sure. Do you kind of understand the intent here?
So are we having a meeting first with HBA and council and then drafting an ordinance? Is that what I heard? But no P and Z? Just correct.
Why don't we want group P and Z?
It could be a joint with council, P and Z and HBA.
Why don't we do a joint?
Okay.
That would be great.
And I think enough time, not like next meeting. I think there needs to be enough time for the HBA to be able to consult its membership and come up with some creative ideas that may require a little bit of research. Is that fair?
Sure.
Do you need, is there a specific amount of time you would like between now and when we do that?
I'm having a meeting for our regulations meeting on Tuesday. We'll run it by them.
How about I work with him to set one up when he gets that done?
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Okay. So we move on to twenty eight. Discuss and consider directing staff to issue an RFQ for a comprehensive plan consultant and determine a structure for the city council to evaluate the proposals. Mr. Cato?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think you'd, you'd ask if we had any other suggestions of people to interview. And I was a little hesitant to do that and said if, if that's the idea, maybe it's best to do an RFQ to see who all's out there.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then do you want to establish, uh, uh, either have a work session for the council to go over all the recipient, all, all of all the submissions to make your choice maybe of two or three to interview?
Okay.
And Ms. Simonton's in the back. She can, she can do an RFQ and let you see everybody that applies and, and then, then the council.
So based on the last time we did it, how many, how many takers would we get on that RFQ?
Seven. The, the answer was seven. They, they can't hear you on TV if you, um, and I, I don't remember how many we interviewed, but it was two or three.
We would have interviewed the top two and I'm, I'm remembering. I think it was about seven.
Okay. And so did you score them based on price and references and experience or?
In that instance, yes. The AICP is not deemed a professional service. It excludes price proposal in that setting. So you would establish your scoring matrix in advance of the release of that RFQ and price can be a component or, or it cannot. Yes. Planning, it's one of those funny things. You can or cannot request price. Kind of depends on how you want to go about it.
Ms. Cannon was first, I'm sorry.
How do we go about setting forth the specifications or the qualifications of those answering?
Of what you're seeking. You know what? We have a document from two thousand fifteen that staff compiled that was led primarily by planning. We can start with that document, look at what other cities have done. That's typically how we write those specs. If you've seen something that you like or resulted in something fantastic, we can use some of that language as well.
I would love to see that so council can give input as to some, you know.
Absolutely.
Some of the requirements that we'd like to.
You bet.
That'd be great.
Yes.
We recently had a workshop with a company that, that does these. If we wanted to interview companies outside of the RFQ, are we allowed to do that?
Well, you know, when you do issue a formal solicitation, that, that kicks off the process of respondents needing to submit. Correct me if I misspeak here, Paige. If we went through that process and you were not satisfied, you know, that tees up another discussion, but in that setting, you're going to want to interview who, who responds. So if you do have someone that you're, you're interested in speaking to, we need to encourage them to participate.
That's, that's how we would do it. If there's, if there's a particular company that I want in the running.
Yes.
You guys will let us know when the RFQ is going out and where the link is and we can send it off.
Yes. Happy to call them personally. Happy to remind them of the deadline if we need to.
Thank you.
But then if they don't make it to your top list, do we still get to interview them?
Well, it would, it would be your top list if council is going to participate in evaluation and scoring. Yes.
Mr. Cato?
I was just going to say, in, in that instance, half, half ought to apply. Send in, they're, they're ready, have it teed up. They'll go through the process as well. And if, and if you want them to be one of the finalists, make them a finalist. And if you are satisfied with the interview you've already done, then you've, you've interviewed them. But, but they really ought to, to send through a proposal as well.
Sure. They applied last time and were ranked second.
I think that's, I think that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're good? Good to go? Okay. Okay. So do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to issue the RFQ.
I'll second that.
Well, wait a minute. We have to get the document first to help them establish criteria.
With the.
Right.
I, I think, I think so. Go ahead. I, I think what we heard was the council wants to be, we'll, we'll bring you back the responses. And so it's, it's up, I think that was what it meant. Do you want to make the, here, see all the responses and make the selection?
That wasn't my request. My request was to allow council input into the qualifications of what we want before the RFQ goes out.
Okay. So would, do you like us to schedule a workshop?
No.
No.
She can send it via email to all of us and we can give our input.
Input of what?
No.
I don't think that works.
Not to each other, but just.
We'll, we'll need to, I think that we're going to do that in a, in a meeting setting. We'll have to evaluate compliance to open meetings in the process.
If we could get sent what was done last time and, and if anyone has any comments or additions, I would just like that opportunity.
We can send that out to you tomorrow. The, the issue's going to be what if, if we get conflicting opinions from council members? And?
And then there won't be a forum to actually discuss those.
So if there's conflicting items, we discuss it at a workshop.
Well, if you, if, if you came up with something and you said, you know, give us three things you're looking for and somebody that can do a comprehensive plan, and then everybody just sends it in to you or, or the secretary by themselves, doesn't copy anybody else and we put those together and we come up with, okay, these are a consensus of what everybody's looking for.
If you're going to want to participate in the creation of the RFP, RFQ document, it may be best for it to come back for council final approval before it's issued.
So we, through your suggestion, we give you some opinions and then you bring it back before us and then we agree on that. We vote on the RFQ then. Is that how it would go? Okay.
Well, you're going to give us tomorrow what was used in the last selection for the RFQ. And if we have any additions or anything, we can respond to the city secretary to.
Perfect. That's perfect. All right. That sounds good.
So the motion is to?
Make a motion to, I guess have staff come back to us with an RFQ that we can vote on and then issue the RFQ.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sines. Okay. Twenty nine. Discuss and consider directing staff to notify residents in the ETJ that do not have fire protection provided by an emergency service district, ESD, that they must develop a plan to finance fire protection within eighteen months or they may experience loss of fire protection by the city of Leander. Chief?
This comes from the discussion with the workshop that we held the other day on the existing areas that are outside the incorporated city limits that we're providing services to without reimbursement. And this would direct us to move forward as we have done with all the other areas that have been outside the city limits to place them into an ESD or give them the option to develop an ESD and work with them. We requested eighteen months in this process, so whoever is developing this plan and moving forward with it will have time to do that. The residents then would have time to petition the commissioners court to have this posted on a ballot and go to a general election vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by council member Cannon with a second by Pro Tim Stevenson. Any more discussion? Was that a question? All right. All in favor? All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you, chief. All right. Number thirty. At this time, the city council is going to convene into executive session pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven two Texas Local Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of right of way land for the East Street project. It is ten o'clock. We are now in executive sess, session. We are now reconvened back into open session and will take action as deemed appropriate in the city council discretion. Mayor Pro Tim Stevenson, do you have a motion?
Yes. To approve a purchase contract for the acquisition and fee simple conveyance of one thousand five hundred sixty square feet, more or less, for right of way dedication and acquisition of one thousand five hundred ninety square feet, more or less, of public utility easement from Zelma D. Madison for the East Street Roadway Improvements Project in exchange for the city's installation of approximately two hundred and seventy five linear feet of four inch wastewater service line, complete and in place. Payment by the city of wastewater impact fee for one L U E and relocation of two storage containers onto the owner's remaining property at the time of construction of the East Street Roadway Improvements Project at no cost to the owner, as more particularly described in Exhibit D of the purchase contract.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion for what Pro Tim Stevenson said with a second by council member Never Ready. All those in favor? All right. Passes unanimously. All right. Council member closing statements. Council member Never Ready.
I have none this evening. Have a good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to pass also.
Council member Sipper?
I have none.
Ms. Cannon?
I would just like to say, we talked a lot about the social media policy, but I encourage everyone to get involved in our elections and ask any of us any questions or concerns you might have. And have a good evening.
Mr. Sines?
Chief Gardner. This is your last meeting, correct?
Oh, wow. I recant, find no comment.
Oh, wow.
Can I start over?
So you know how much you mean to me. You, I mean, you're more than just our fire chief. You're a friend to all of us and, um, you know, we, we love you and can't wait to, to see what happens in, in your next endeavor. And we're, you're going to be missed terribly. And I always say that you're, you're the smartest one here because you know where all the bodies buried and, and I sure do appreciate everything you've given to our city.
I think we all echo that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You're not leaving Le, you're not leaving Leander though, are you? Okay. Good. Good.
You'll love that.
I'll give you some latitude. I promise.
All right. So upcoming event between now and then, the Parks Department has Cupid's Helpers, which I wish was around when my kids were little. You can drop your kids off and go have a date with your honey or just breathe and not get hassled about dinner. Also, there's been a lot of talk about election season coming up and I hope that everybody, whether you're running or you're just supporting somebody who's running, I hope you all remember that, you know, people are opponents and not enemies. And no matter what, we're all still going to live together and work together. And so, you know, prop up your candidate, but don't tear down anybody, whether they're running or they just have a different opinion than you. And see y'all next time.
Yes.